It's 5:30 and I'd like to call this City Council Special Meeting to Order on March 22, 2021, and the time is 5:30. And just want to let people know that tonight, this is a special meeting because if we do make a decision, we'll be able to do that because of the way that we've set this up. So we called to order. I'd like us to have the flag displayed and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance when you can see it. Great. Let's stand if you're able and say it together. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please take the roll call?
Certainly. Mayor Protim Sierra.
Present.
Member Anderson.
Present.
Member Questa.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Member Ward.
Here.
Member Wink.
Present.
And Mayor Olson.
Here.
All seven present.
Thank you. Our first agenda item tonight is our financial, monthly financial update information. And here to present is Director Jackie Lowe.
Good evening, Council. Let me share my screen with you. Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Excellent. Let's take a look at the general fund revenues. Through January 2021, the city's general fund receives total 5.1 million here and are 9.9% of budgeted revenue. Total revenue year-to-date is tracking probably 0.4% higher than the same time last year. Regarding the major variances, please review the council communication. Yeah, of the total revenue line items, let's zoom in the sales use tax revenue. I want to point out, we made two changes to this slide. The first is, we are reporting the year-to-date numbers instead of month-to-date numbers. Second, we're reporting the total revenue sources instead of the top 10 industries. And here's the reason why. When we receive, when we review the December preliminary financials last month, Councilmember Anderson asked why the November and December taxes received from the restaurant industry flip-flopped. The reason is that we received less taxes in December 2020 compared to the same time last year due to COVID. To minimize business seasonality, we've decided to report on the year-to-date numbers instead of month-to-date numbers to smooth out the business cycle. The second reason why we changed the reporting item from top 10 industry to revenue sources is because we added one revenue source from the marketplace facilitators, because the taxes received from facilitators are increasing significantly, and that cannot be categorized in any industry. Also want to clarify that this slide reports the taxes incurred assessed, not a taxes collected, because there's usually a timing difference. This slide, just opposite from what we just reviewed, this slide's review the sales use tax revenues received, collected. So this is on a cash basis, not when the sales taxes incurred. So you can see the taxes received in 2019, 2020, 2021. This accumulative change in sales use tax collected against the cash received, since January 2017, the sales use taxes have increased by 6.2 million, thanks to the sales use tax team. The next one, we want to review the expenditures. Expenditures year-to-date are 4.1 million or 7.7% of the fiscal year budget. The total expenditures year-to-date are tracking 1% higher than 2019. This is due to timing issues in IT, public works, police, and parking wrecks. They tend to be timing issue during the first few months, because we usually pay one-time items like renewals in the first few months. Please note, this expenditure does not include transfers out to capital project funds, a dollar amount of 3 million. This is a fund balance composition. Our budgeted operating deficit for 2021 is approximately 2 million. You can see at the end of January 2021, in fact, we have an operating surplus of 991,000. The reason why we're showing a deficit of 1.8 million is because the transfer of 3 million to the Capital Improvement Fund. And under the column 2020, you can see at the end of January, we have an assigned fund balance of 17.7 million. This number includes the 2020 surplus of 2.3 million. When we reviewed with the council member last month, the un-audited number was 2.75 million. As of today, it's still unaudited, probably 2.35 million. This is the year-to-date sales use tax collected by area. And also, as per council member request, we included the sales tax map for your reference. So this concludes my presentation tonight. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Director Lowe. Council, any questions for her tonight? I see no hands up, so I think we're good to go. Thank you, and thanks for including that map.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item 5 is a 2021 Fourth of July Celebration Information and Direction item. Our Director of Parks, Recreation, Library, and Golf, Christina Underhill, and the Event Supervisor, Tony Arnaldi, are here to present with a representative from Tri-County Health Department, I believe it's Melissa Sager tonight, to provide information and seek direction for the upcoming Fourth of July event. All right, take it away.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having us tonight. I'm going Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, thank you for having us tonight. Tonight, we wanted to come and talk to you all and seek your direction and guidance on the 2021 Fourth of July celebration. So we're going to go through the current status of the event, what other agencies are doing, options for Independence Day events, Inglewood options, and then questions and discussion. Currently, we are at Level Blue as of today. So this will just kind of go through and tell you what the COVID restrictions and guidelines are for the Tri-County and the COVID dial. So Level Blue would allow us to do 50% capacity and up to 250 people per designated activity area for both seated and unseated events. We asked Tri-County if they would give us a recommendation on how they thought we should proceed. We've been talking with them several times since COVID started, as the dial changes. And I'm excited that we have Melissa Sager here tonight to help us understand a little bit more and ask some pointed questions. Their recommendation, their most recent recommendation was that at the current dial level, that an event of the magnitude of what our traditional Fourth of July event is, is 10 plus, up to 20,000-plus people, and we don't have a way for contact tracing and other guideline, one-way directions, and different things that they recommend that each person does or each group does to have an outdoor event. I reached out to several other cities, and I'm part of many groups that see what other people are doing. And this is where we have, what we have come up with as far as our surrounding metro cities. You can see that there are many that are not doing any events. Some are able to control their screen, their viewing areas with one and two ins and outs, and able to control the crowd with contact tracing, one-way directions. Some are doing just fireworks, no events. And it's kind of across the board. But for the most part, a lot of them have just decided to not do an event at all for the Independence Day holiday and to focus their events later in the year. So after talking to staff, Director Underhill, and many others, we have come up with the following options that we think Inglewood, we would like you guys to look at and give us guidance on what you think we should be, we should move forward on. The first one is to move forward with the traditional event, which I can't wait to talk to Melissa to see. I know things are changing within days, so I'm happy, I'm excited to hear what she has to say on that, if that would even be possible, and what that would look like. Move forward with an alternate event. And then the final would be to be do nothing at all. Option A, to move forward with the traditional event, it would be the traditional location of Cornerstone Park. We would enlist our partners, being Littleton, South Suburban, Sheridan, Arapahoe County. And then we listed some of the challenges that we currently would know we would be facing to move forward with the traditional event. And that would be the COVID restrictions, and then, of course, the fire ban. We had a tremendous snowfall last weekend, and that has helped. Was able to touch base a little bit with the Fire Marshal today, and he said, we're not out of the woods yet. But with snowing every other day, it's hard to predict where that's going to be come July. An alternative option for Option B that we put together is if we just held a smaller Independence Day celebration. This is just a snapshot of what it could look like, nothing set in stone. And of course, if this was an option that we wanted to do, I would again look to guidance on what council thinks that that should look like and what we should do for our citizens. Additionally, there are a lot of other events that we could do throughout the summer if we were not to move forward with our traditional event. And that would be a Friedrich Frenzy, different farmers markets, art walks, pop-up concerts, possible drive-in movies, much like we did last summer, and maybe even movies in the park. And of course, Option C, which would be not to host any Independence Day celebrations As I mentioned, Melissa Sager is here from the Tri-County Health Department. She's also a member of the COVID Recovery Team, and Director Underhill is also here. And we would love to hear any questions or discussion that you would like to have concerning this. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Arnaldi. Do you want to have Melissa Sager present anything, or is she just here to answer questions?
I'm happy to say a few words.
Melissa, would you introduce yourself with your title? We didn't put it on the, and I don't want to massacre it for you.
It's probably too many words to fit on a slide, anyway.
There are a lot.
I'm Melissa Sager. I am the Policy and Intergovernmental Affairs Manager for the Tri-County Health Department, and I supervise our compliance enforcement, business reopening, and school task forces in the COVID response. And a big piece of that is events. First, just a quick shout out to Tony, who's been fantastic to work with, just a great advocate for the city and really thinking through innovative ways to do this. We had some really great conversations. I think one of the biggest things I want to mention here, and something I let Tony know just today, is that the state did release Dial 3.0, along with some anticipated repeal of public health orders on April 16. Not a complete repeal. What the state has said is that they plan to repeal all current orders. We will get another public health order. It will be significantly more limited. One of the things that they are still limiting are indoor events. So they've expressly said 50%, no more than 500 indoors. The final public health order doesn't come out until tomorrow, so things may change between now and then, as they tend to do. And it will include things like guidance for schools, we anticipate, alongside a limited mask order, possibly. And so, some of the things are very unpredictable. It doesn't change much of what Tony and I talked about, though. The state has promised a snap-back provision, is what they're calling it. So even once we move out of public health orders, a provision likely tied to hospital capacity that would bring counties back into the dial for restrictions. And, you know, things have been getting better. So as I talk to your folks, we've been talking about what we could do. We want our cities to be able to do community events. We know how important they are. But that likely through the summer, things should look different than they have in the past. And this seems like a challenging event, to switch things up, to limit things, to make it look different than last year, given the number of folks you anticipate having. Another concern is travel. They're not all from Inglewood. They're coming from different places, because you guys put on a good show. And that's a little risky, a lot risky as well. Tony, you mentioned some of the control factors. I think one of the big things is the ability to adjust if community conditions change. So things have been looking good, and we want folks to do things. But with an event as big as this, the ability to switch things up in response to community conditions is limited, and it's high risk, given the cost of this scale of an event. And so, we have concerns about the variant strands still. We're certainly not out of the woods. Things are looking better, and we think that they, we hope that they will keep looking better. But it is still unpredictable, and the Fourth of July just is not that far away. So I think I would love to talk about alternatives. If there is a way for you all that you feel confident that you could switch this up quickly, depending on those community conditions, I think we could discuss that. But ultimately, it's a risk to lock something as large scale as this down in such an unpredictable timeframe. So we don't expect state restrictions past April 16. But it's unpredictable. And I think that that's something to consider. And then, just, you know, uncontrolled movement, that travel piece, the inability to monitor for social distancing. I know some of the spaces, you know, it's a summer party. And so, it can be difficult to keep control in that space, and that heightens the risk for activities like this. So Tony mentioned some of the things that our local governments are doing. Most have pulled their events back, canceled them. Some of our smaller towns have been able to do smaller-scale events. And so Tony and I had talked about making it an Inglewood smaller event. Maybe it's not as big of a fireworks show. We had talked about drive-ins and just the logistics. And, you know, it's not an easy decision. But I'm here to answer any questions. Some of them may be, we just don't know yet. But I'm happy to chat through this with you. And then, of course, would love to see something innovative to celebrate the Fourth in Inglewood. So hope to be a part of that.
Thank you, Ms. Sager. Appreciate it. And there are several hands-ups, so I'll let them go. But I'm going to come around to ask if you know what the prediction rates are for vaccination, and what we, what our ideal herd immunity, whatever we want to call it, is going to be by then either. So let's start with Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. My question, thank you, Ms. Sager. My question is, what are the outdoor capacity limits under COVID Dial 3.0?
Um, so...
In terms of the size of the gatherings?
It's actually a little bit of a gray area. So it's one of the places that we're looking for text of the public health order. What the state has said is that they are removing site-specific variances for outdoors. And we don't know how that will impact capacities. So site-specific variances have traditionally been limited to facilities in excess of 28,000 square feet. Of course, you can do that in many outdoor spaces. Outdoor events have their own capacity limits. And so, we're not so sure what that looks like for the state to remove those outdoor site-specific variances, and what that means for events more generally.
Thank you.
We will get that public health order tomorrow evening, so we'll know more then.
It'll have more details in it than you think, too? Okay.
It will. So the state gave us a very general slideshow, and it doesn't have all the details. They did seek stakeholder feedback until noon today and are taking that back into tomorrow. And so, we do expect to see more detail.
That's what I, that's what I thought. So I thought, yeah, that's great. That's helpful. They were still doing feedback, so that's helpful to know. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Sager, you mentioned some, well, you said, quote, "Some of our smaller towns have done smaller-scale events." Can you let me know, let us know what defines what you called our smaller towns? Because obviously, you made a comment that, you know, maybe Inglewood could do that as well. But how small are you talking?
You know, I didn't have any specifics in front of me. And I, I don't think it's a significantly, I mean, they're doing all kinds of things. I think one of the biggest concerns with this event is people traveling from different places. And so, when other towns have done events advertising really to their folks, keeping it local, they've done grab bags, they've done bike events that are spread out over bigger spaces. I mean, gosh, I wish I would have come with notes with all the alternatives. But I don't think necessarily Inglewood's size is limiting completely, as a bigger city.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to staff and Ms. Sager. I appreciate you being here as well and the insight. You know, when we'd have to have a final decision by, Ms. Arnaldi, on if we were to proceed with the park?
I'm going to let Christina talk to that a little bit better.
Sure. Councilmember Questa, Mayor, ultimately, we need a decision soon. We're about three months behind on the true planning process if we move forward with the fireworks event. If we do a smaller-scale event, it might be reservation-based, like we've done for the extravaganza that's coming up this Saturday and some of the other events that we've had. And so, the sooner we know, the better. We also need to let the other jurisdictions who are involved know, so they can plan other events or go whatever direction they choose.
Thank you. That's helpful. Mayor, I've got a couple more. I see Mayor Protim's hand up. So I'll put mine back up, and if you'd swing back around for me.
Sure, I will do that. Thank you. Mayor Protim Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Member Questa. I guess my question is regarding the music on Option B. So I'm kind of curious about the roaming band. There's a, there's a note there that states no wind instruments. So are we still talking that brass instruments and basically any wind instrument is still potentially able to spread COVID? Is that my understanding of this, even if it's an outdoor event?
Melissa, do you want to touch on that? I was just taking the precautions. Most of the things that we've been doing, if there was going to be any closer than 25 feet, that it would be no wind instruments.
Yeah, so those wind instruments do increase aerosolized droplets, and so they are significantly riskier activity, just like singing. Outdoors is a lot better. The public health order requires 25-foot distancing if you're not wearing your mask outdoors. And so, it's something that you can do. It's a riskier activity. And then, we just chat through, what do you do to mitigate that risk, like Tony said, increase distancing, making sure it's distanced all around, and things like that. It's doable. It just depends on your capacity.
Okay. And I appreciate that, Ms. Sager. The reason why I brought up the question is, I know that we brought this up in the past for another event, pre-COVID. But one option that I'd like to see within Option B, and even if they were willing to do, would be the Inglewood High School band putting together or being part of this celebration for the Fourth of July. So not sure what, if they've been practicing or what they've been doing with regards to COVID. But that's an option that I would like to consider if, obviously, if council is open to it, and they are as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to jump to Councilmember Ward, and then back to Member Questa.
Thank you. So just one note real quick. I have to jump away at 6 o'clock. So I don't know if I'm going to be here for the end of this discussion, but I would like to be marked as favoring Option A if I don't get back. That's, that's all I have. I'm going to jump away real quick. Should only be gone about 10 minutes.
All right. Councilmember Questa.
Give her, so in the end of the packet, there are the financial considerations that go along with this. Ms. Arnaldi, you mentioned, or some of our neighboring cities that make contributions as well. I can't recall. So I'm seeing 47,000 and some change is Inglewood's cost. We put that in the budget this year?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Director Underhill for that. But I believe that Fourth of July is, was still budgeted for. I'm not sure. Director Underhill, can you speak to that, please?
Yes, we budgeted for this event, to have the fireworks show as a usual event. Yes.
Very good. And so, Littleton is usually good for, let's say, your 16. Sheridan's a couple thousand and so forth. Have they committed yet, or is that a conversation that we would still need to have?
We have had the conversation with them. They are just kind of waiting for what kind of, what direction we are taking. So they would be willing to still contribute at last conversation with them.
Okay, very good. This is my last question. You know, both Option A and Option E are attractive. Now, obviously, Option A, there's the considerations with COVID, and I'm trying to forecast where we'll be. Are these mutually exclusive? If we had Option A, does that mean that we couldn't still do drive-ins later in the summer? And I know that those were new this past summer, but I think that they were events that folks like. So if we were to do something with fireworks, Option A, are there any things that we could still potentially do throughout the summer with pop-up concerts, drive-in movies, movies in parks, and so forth?
I would have to, again, go back to Director Underhill for that. But I was basing that if we were not to go with the traditional, the budget that we would have, would be able to have more of those additional events. I'm not sure if the budget allows right now to have both.
Okay, understood.
Christina?
No, Tony, you're correct. It's, it's one or the other. If we don't do the fireworks, we have a huge savings. We'll be able to do more smaller events through the summer, leading up to the block party, which we're hoping to have, and do a great event with that, a bigger-than-ever type event. So, yeah, the 47,000 committed, if we don't utilize that for this, we'll have it for other smaller events. We can spread out through the summer.
Point of information, didn't we allocate 35,000 from the unassigned fund balance for additional, potentially additional events? So does that, is that, does that not impact whether we choose? potentially additional events? So does that, is that, does that not impact whether we choose one or the other?
That is correct. You, that is allocated. I see Sean just came off. Go ahead, Sean.
We haven't actually allocated that yet.
Right.
It is in the proposed list of spending.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, we haven't made any decisions on that yet. That's in that pool.
And that answers my questions. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is, the traditional event, is it generally in Cornerstone Park? Or is it in Bellevue Park?
It is across both parks with South Suburban in between. So it goes across both. We have active activities in Bellevue Park and Cornerstone Park.
So why was Bellevue Park not listed? Are we putting the brunt of it in Littleton?
Point of information, I think that the actual fireworks get fired out of Cornerstone. That's probably why Cornerstone gets, gets listed all the time, right? Or is it out of? Is that correct?
Um, yeah, so the fireworks come out of Cornerstone Park and there is a much larger presence in Cornerstone Park. It wasn't dismissive of Bellevue Park because it is over both of them. It was just that that would be the location of the fireworks. And so that's kind of why, I guess we say fireworks in Cornerstone Park. And you can see them from, from both parks.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Um, that's it. Thank you.
But yeah, just to follow up on that, I mean, I, I've gone to these many times and I, I never knew where they were fired out of. I was always in Bellevue. And then I realized, oh, they're done across the street. And then there's a lot more people over there that I had never known before. Because we would just go sit in the park as a family. Any other? So I, I, here's my take on it. I would love to have a very successful number of events throughout the summer in neighborhoods. And I'm assuming that some of these extra things would be that neighborhood planning program, or if we approved the 35,000 and the extra funding, that would be added to that. Is that right?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
And so I, I want our big event at the end of the summer, or our, our block party to be somehow protected through all this. So in my mind, I'd like, I'd like to see us take the summer and really focus on how do we do big-time neighborhood Fourth of July celebrations on small scales throughout the, and it's gonna be a lot more work to do that than to do a big fireworks thing, I, I think, because fireworks, well, fireworks is all in just one place. And, and get really good at that so that the next year we can do both at the same time, which probably is gonna give some people a heart attack that I just said that. But I think that there's a lot more bang for the buck if we were to, if we were to actually really nurture the neighborhood ones, which we've never really been able to do and focus on them. And if, maybe this is a year to do that. I think there's as much risk to that in some ways, though, when you talk about COVID. I mean, whether it's 20,000 or 50 in a street, I don't know, you know, might be the same kind of thing. But I, I, I do want to ask Melissa Sager, do you have the information on what you think the rate is going to be for, how far are we going to be with vaccinations by then?
I don't. I was trying to pull that information. I am happy to get back to this group after this meeting and touch base with folks. I think we are ahead of schedule with vaccine. We anticipate in just two or three weeks to be at general population. Vaccine allocations are still limiting, so we're not getting enough vaccine to vaccinate everybody quite yet. And so people who already qualify haven't gotten their vaccine yet. But we do continue to move through that quickly and we have, we're positive about the outlook on vaccine. I'll get more specific information.
It's just nice to know. If we're gonna get close to 70%, this might not be as big of a deal discussion anyway. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll just go ahead and weigh in here. I've had the opportunity to go down to Bellevue several times over the years and enjoy the fireworks show and celebrate Fourth of July. And I have noticed that it's, that it's an event that attracts a lot of people, including a lot of working-class people. These are the, these are the people who, who prepared your carryout meal or your delivery meal in a crowded kitchen. The, a lot of the people who go to the, this event are construction workers, retail workers and service industry workers, for many of whom social distancing was never really a possibility due to the nature of their job. They're the ones that made stay-home safe, safe possible for many of the rest of us. And now, you know, after, after all this, all this last year, they've been told, you know, don't gather for the holidays, don't gather to, to, to celebrate weddings, don't gather for funerals, don't gather for parties, but do gather every day to perform your essential job so that white-collar workers can stay home and stay safe. And now, you know, we're, we're considering the possibility of telling them in some way or another to limit or not gather to celebrate their basic liberties. In a free country, we don't need permission or government allowance to celebrate our freedoms. In fact, I, I think that if we don't celebrate our freedoms, even their constitutionally guaranteed freedoms, over time, we're going to lose those freedoms. And so I think there's, there has never been a more important day. Or I don't see another more important day than July for 2021 for full celebration of the Fourth of July. And governments should not only, at all levels, should not just allow them, allow celebrations like this, but should encourage and, and join in. It's, it's time to celebrate our, our, you know, celebrate our freedoms and celebrate them on a large scale. So I support option A, full, full-fledged Fourth of July celebration. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. Until I receive information from Tri-County Health about more information that you asked about, Mayor, about the, the projected vaccination coverage by the time of the event, I'm going with option C. So I'd like to see those figures really to, to help me with that answer. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Dr. Douglas did just get back to me about the vaccination rates. He said that the New York Times is predicting 70% by June 30th with at least one dose. And I'll follow up with that, a link to that information and any additional, but 70% by June 30th.
Of one dose? And that's specific to our area or just the country?
I think it is national data, so that will depend, too.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mary. And I, I'm dipping back into a question here myself. No, I, I certainly want to do the fireworks, too. I, I love them. I think that they're one of the highlights of the, the city of Inglewood and, and really an event that people throughout the metro area associate with us. One of the, one of the concerns I have is, let's say that we're one of the few municipalities that goes forward with it. And then we become the main attraction for really, you know, almost all of the metro area. Let's call it. If you want to go and see fireworks, Inglewood is one of the few places offering them. Bellevue Park is very attractive as is Cornerstone and offers a fair amount of space. Are there, has there been any discussion yet if, if we need to control the amount of people that in, going? I heard a reservation system, but how is, how do we enforce that? I mean, I can think of a dozen different entry points to Bellevue Park. There's probably more than that, truth be told.
I'm not sure who to ask that of, but maybe the parks. Go ahead, Tony.
No, I would defer to Christina because we, we've also mentioned, talked about that.
Yeah, that's, that's a big concern is, and that's what we looked at other cities around the metro area to see who has control points of their parks. And the ones that are offering fireworks do have control points for the, the parks that they're gonna have the fireworks in. Bellevue and Cornerstone are not as easily controlled, and that's our bigger concern is if we may be the only fireworks show in the metro region, we may get a lot more people than 20,000. So now you're looking at additional police services and traffic control and all of that. So and then if, if everybody is vaccinated, I think safety, safety is the number one concern, whether it's vaccinations or not. And if we get more than our normal 10, 20,000, we may be in trouble as far as control of the actual event itself.
20,000? What is our typical attendance?
From my understanding, it's been between 10 and 20. We don't have an actual head count per se, but the estimates have been, depending on the year and what other fireworks shows, it's, it's reached up to about 20,000 in years past.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you, Mayor.
It's been 20,000 at least once during my time. I went to Cornerstone one time as, with a bunch of council members and I could not believe on me. People were there. It was very, very exciting to see that many people coming out, but I don't know recently. Come, our Mayor Protem, Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I would be for option B for the reason that Member Questa, or for the question that Member Questa just asked, just the, the control of the population of how many people from surrounding municipalities may be visiting our fireworks show. I still want to have an event. I think outdoor events should be doable, as well as, Ms. Sager, you, you kind of alluded to the fact that vaccinations to the general population should be happening quite soon. I know that Governor Polis stated sometime in April or sometime in May, he was expecting that to be true as well for Colorado. And so I, I think at that point, I would be more comfortable with option B. I would like to do option A, but I'm still a little bit concerned about just cloud, crowd control as an option, or as, just as an issue that we may encounter. So for me, option B with some of the items that I threw out earlier that would be feasible, I'd like to see some of that. But yeah, I definitely want to see some sort of celebration here within the city of Inglewood.
I, I also just, I just want to make a note that we're not talking about not allowing people to celebrate Fourth of July. I had one of the best celebrations last year with our neighborhood in some very interesting ways. And, and then also heard about other people's stories as well from all walks of life and economic backgrounds. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that this discussion doesn't mean we're limiting people's ability and right to celebrate our Fourth of July. Matter of fact, we're actually encouraging people to find even more ways. And that's why I'd like to spend, I'd, I'd like to really go way out with this, with this neighborhood plan that we have and really focus on it and get very, very good at it. And I don't think any other year we'd be able to do that. I think this is the year to try and do some of those things. So I'm, I'm not up for A yet until we see a few more things, but I think that Director Underhill and, and Fire and Police need to probably come up with some metric of when you need to decide by. And when, when's the, the final drop-dead date of, we can't do it if we don't have a decision by then? Otherwise, you know, I'm open to considering it still, but I really, I for sure tonight want to say, I want to do B for sure. I don't know where the rest of you are on that. And then we figure out A if we can, as we hear this new dial and what it has limitations for.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll kind of respond to your comment there. We need to know now if we need to move forward with fireworks and how we need to proceed. If we're doing the smaller event, Tony's already started to line up some of that. If we're doing the big event, logistically, there's a lot. We've got to move on very quickly.
So are you saying tonight, we need to give you direction?
If we can get direction tonight, it'd be very helpful, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move forward with the traditional. I think the general public is very wise about whether they themselves ought to attend or not. And I just, I think it's, we need to get back to normal. And I mean, I think at one point, I guess one of my questions is, has the fireworks itself, has the expense gone out of sight? I mean, there was a discussion, I think in the Budget Advisory Committee a year ago that that was a possibility, or can we still get what we need within our budget?
I can speak to that a little bit. I unfortunately can't answer that. I reached out to the fireworks distributors in January. In January, the price was similar to years past, like almost exactly the same. But I would have ordered and already have purchased them. So with it being three months later now, and I'm not sure, and maybe Melissa can speak to it, but I don't know if there's any shipping differentials now, if there's, you know, because they, they do come from China. I would, I asked them if there was a way that they would guarantee, and they said they couldn't give me any type of date or guarantee or possibility assurance until the order was placed. So at this point, I'm kind of stuck in that regard.
Okay, so if, if we decide to move forward, I guess you will make that work or whatever, right? Thank you.
All right. So Member Questa, you're the only one that I don't have a total way in on in this. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no trouble at all. I, I'm gonna go with A as well. Now, that might be support for A then. If the support isn't there, then certainly B is an alternative.
No, there is support there because Member Ward, Member Anderson, Member Questa, and Member Russell all wanted A. All right. So it looks to me like we'd like you to go ahead and take a look at it and figure out the finances and whether you can do it. Tony, are you telling us that you have to place an order before they can guarantee that they would arrive and what the price would be? So if they don't arrive by the Fourth, we're stuck?
Yeah. It's just, it's in such a, such a different time now. And like I had mentioned, you know, we would have usually have, have signed a contract and have paid for them before February 1st. So it's just very unclear right now where we're at on that, unfortunately. Christina, do you have anything that you would like to add to that?
Yeah, I think initially we had reached out to the fireworks company and asked, is this even a possibility to get the fireworks? And first, they were non-responsive, and then their response was, yes, maybe, but they were concerned about tariffs. And I believe that fireworks are actually coming from Wuhan, China. And so there might be some challenges in getting fireworks. We also looked at some other local vendors and they were not available to purchase fireworks from. So in addition to COVID and fire bans and now fireworks, that's where we sit with this event. There was no guarantee way back in January or February we'd even get them. So I don't know if you want to ask Melissa again, if we move forward with option A and have the event, does Tri-County have any heartburn in us doing that? I know there's a lot of factors in the play and a lot of unknowns at this point, and that's kind of where staff has stood of not, not, not sure which direction to go. So Melissa, do you have any response?
I would, you know, the fireworks situation is pretty crazy. I think a big, I think there is a concern about the travel aspect and folks coming from all over and having Inglewood be one of the only locations doing this is concerning. I think the smaller events are adjustable, can be more tightly controlled, are more tightly marketed to a smaller group. But ultimately, I think it is a, a risk benefit weighing that you all, you know, need to do. It's, it's very unpredictable. And I know that makes it impossible for you. I think we're having this conversation about event planning with everyone and they're in the same boat. And I think they're just weighing these same things. Is it, is it worth the risk? The cost, it's, it's huge for you all. And so you know, it's a tough call.
Councilmember Anderson, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think with we, you know, if there's other vendor options, just as far, as far as I can tell, we just need to, you know, do everything we do, we can do to get the fireworks to pull off the show at this point. I wish we would have had this conversation earlier so that we weren't in this situation. But you know, now, you know, we want to, if we're gonna do the big fireworks show, I'm sure there are options out there. Alternative vendors or other places locally, just, you know, I think it's, I think it's time to get off on the phone and see where we can source these fireworks from to make sure we get them. That's just my two cents on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Questa. You're muted. There you go.
This was just, I mean, this was just discussed. Director Underhill, when do you think you'll have a feel for if, if those are something we can throw hands on or not, the fireworks?
We'll reach out to the fireworks company tomorrow and see what, what their feel is, if they've had to order them for other agencies around the country or what, what's going on with that. So we should hopefully know this week.
Okay. And just to that note, I guess I, a comment from me. I mean, we've seen supply chains disrupted across many different industries. And, and I, I wonder if, let's say, you know, Christine Underhill, Director Underhill, pardon me, does her diligence and she can't turn any up. I mean, are we a no-go? I would think we don't have this event without fireworks. But we, we revisit this. I, I would, what is plan B if we can't get our hands on fireworks? Which, I mean, wouldn't entirely surprise me considering how tough it is to get, you know, certain other things that are out there.
I, I think we have plans. I think we have plan B. We were given plan B tonight, right?
Okay, so we'll default right into option B then if if we can't get fireworks?
That would be the plan. We do need to move forward with either events. So if we find out this week we cannot get fireworks, we'll plan on option B and doing the smaller event. But more events throughout the summer with the cost savings from the larger events. So we'll keep you all updated. We'll get an email out to all of you as soon as we have an answer on the fireworks.
Be good. Thank you.
I just need to weigh in more. I I and I I know we have a consensus here, but I have got to say that I think this is a very foolish public health decision based on really unreasonable thinking around public and what a celebration of the Fourth is supposed to have. There is no reason why we can't just continue to do parks things without a huge draw into the city with fireworks. We can do other things in the parks and in neighborhoods and still celebrate fully. And to make this be the key piece to bring people together and do it in a way that's really, I consider to be fiscally and personally professionally irresponsible, I just have to speak out against it tonight. Go ahead, Councilmember Questa.
Can you expand on the fiscal irresponsibility?
$47,000 to bring in 20,000 up to 20,000, who knows how many more into a setting where we can't even secure whether their safety is going to be, you know, whether there is any and what's going to happen at this point. I mean, maybe the other way I'd feel better about it personally is if we had a a point where we're going to decide we're not going to do it. And we'll let the we'll let the fireworks be used in the August event instead, which seems like that could happen, maybe a scaled down event or smaller ones around the city. I don't, we probably don't have the capacity for that, but that's a lot of money. It's a lot of money to begin with, and we've always said that's an awful lot of money to be putting into fireworks. But then to add in the public health piece to me is is really, it's over the top for me.
Okay, briefly, I see those standing unto themselves. We spend that money every year and we always have. So I mean, if you find it physically irresponsible this year, then you would have the past X amount of years. I don't know that I've ever seen you vote against it in the past. Now, I could be wrong about that.
I last time I suggested I was not in favor of the of the last year I didn't. And then the year before I questioned it. I have all along questioned it because I thought we should raise money for it. I thought we should have sponsors for it. I think it's a lot of money to take out of the budget. It's not that I'm against the event. I just think it's become really expensive and we should find some other ways to do it as well.
Fair enough. I will say this, in response to your thought that this is a foolish event regarding public safety, certainly fair for you to make that. I would like to state one more time, I am voting for this. Knowing that we will always be in accordance to what is ever in play with Tri County Health at the date of this event. And I believe everybody else is voting to it under those same circumstances.
So if if Tri County Health says this is unwise, we don't want you to do this, then you would say, okay, we won't do this.
Of course, we've got Tri County Health on here, and I didn't hear anything to that extent.
Okay.
I think that that's part of the gamble. We do not intend on implementing restrictions, but there are lots of unknowns. The variant cases, how that spreads, there is this snapback provision with the state. If things were to increase or get dangerous, that's that's part of the balancing. It's part of the risk.
So we spend the money and Tri County comes back and says we can't do it, then we got to figure out something else. The fireworks can be used, but within a short range of time, I think they can still be used, but we can't keep them for a year, unfortunately. I think they go bad, don't they, Tony? Or something. I think the last time we we went through this, we had to figure that out. Anyway, Councilmember Anderson, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to weigh in on the the safety aspect, I thought I thought I had heard heard you say earlier, Mayor, that you thought maybe doing a bunch of smaller neighborhood things may entail the same amount of risk. Maybe I misunderstood that. But I don't I don't think the public health risk of a large outdoor fence is much different than a bunch of small outdoor vents. But that that being said, you know, this is this is the the best time I can imagine to be celebrating in a big way. Our our freedoms and our liberties. So I am I am definitely voting for this and want to move forward with it eagerly. Thank you.
All right. So I think tonight we do we need to have a motion to have this go forward? It's in the budget, so we don't really need to vote tonight. We just gave you consensus of going forward. I think that's all we need, right? City Manager Lewis or Director Underhill? Because it's already in the budget. It's already set. We're just not saying no.
Yes, I believe that's the way it would go is we've got your, we'll move forward with option A pending fireworks. And if we can get them, if we find out there's no way we can get fireworks this year due to shipping or local vendors not having them available. Well, we'll touch base with you all via email and let you know that that's the case and what direction will be headed, which will be option B. Since that's the lesser attendee option, and then we'll go from there. So we'll communicate all that with you in the very near future, hopefully this week or early next.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Melissa Sager, for being on tonight as well. And you'll take your heartburn and go and figure it out. Sorry. All right. So we're on to Agenda Item Five or Six, sorry, Customer Assistance Program Discussion, Update Number Two. And for and this again is information and direction. And our Director of Utilities, South Platte Renew, Peter Van Rye is here, along with Stand Tech Consultant Carol Molesky to talk this through with us in the near term and long term.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's good to be with you tonight. The next three items I have on the agenda for tonight, I have one PowerPoint presentation for us. So we'll do the first item and then I'll I'll share a screen and then unshare a screen. These three items are are the the follow on to the work that we did last year with rates and fees. If you I was thinking about if you go all the way back to September of of 2019, that's when we selected a consultant to do a master planning effort. And then we got those results in April of last year. And then we worked through the the rate and fee process all through last year. And then these three items, the first of which is the Customer Assistance Program, were additional steps beyond the rate and fee study that we wanted to move forward with. I also would like to just introduce on the call today as well is Siwan Rao with Stand Tech, as well as Jennifer Walker and Angela Goodman from Utilities at the City of Inglewood. So I'm going to start by sharing my screen. Make sure I get the right one. Okay, so can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So the first thing I'll talk about tonight is an update of where we're at on the Customer Assistance Program, which we've talked about a few times over throughout the course of last year and then earlier this year in January. All right, let me find the right one to advance this. Sorry. There we go. Okay. So if you recall, the Customer Assistance Program was something to help offset the fact that the rates and fees were were going to increase. And specifically, we had included the $15 capital investment fee for the water fund to and to build up revenue for the costs associated with the the needs for the water fund. The the five general elements that we talked about, if you recall, were eligibility requirements, discount level, funding, funding source, administration and application. And when we last talked, these were the general guidelines that we moved forward with based on council discussion. And eligibility requirements, we were looking at 250% of the federal poverty level. The assistance level would be $180 a year, which was equivalent to $15 a month, which is exactly equal to the the water capital investment fee. The funding source at that point in time was a combination of general fund and donation. Administration, the the desire was to partner with Arapahoe County to help administer this program and execute it since they do these types of programs. And then the application, we wanted to make it as similar as possible to Arapahoe County. Well, we we have been working with Arapahoe County since since we last talked. And one of the issues that we quickly realized as we were talking with them is they're implementing a number of programs right now, specifically related to CARES Act, CARES Act funding and the new rescue package that just came out. And when we talked to them about building a new Customer Assistance Program, they said that they didn't have capacity to take on a new program and in terms of developing a new program. However, there are a number of current programs available that offer utility assistance. And so in our discussions with them, we we centered the the conversations around what was available and how could that? How could those programs be something that could be accessed by our customers from a utilities perspective? And so from that, we ended up with a more of a roadmap of in the short term, since Arapahoe County does not have the capacity to build and administer a new program, was to work to work within their programs that they have currently today. And then over the course of this year, as we're utilizing those programs, continue to look at building and formalizing a City of Inglewood Customer Assistance Program that would be in house. Ultimately, Arapahoe County thought an in-house program would be better from a usability and access standpoint. So the the thought was, the discussion was that customers may see it, may feel it's easier to access a program like this from their own city as opposed to going to the county. And so we we took that feedback and then have incorporated that into our thinking as it relates to how we phase into this type of program. There's a tremendous amount of funding available and and what we've what we've found through through discussions with them is the the first one is the emergency rent assistance, and that's also that's rent and utility assistance. And so that was part of the CARES Act's funding. It's also been extended through the most recent funding program that was passed by Congress a couple of weeks ago. The new the new program actually extends it through 2024. Right now, Arapahoe County said that that program is funded to, I believe, around $9.8 million. And so that's rent and utilities. Often, people are accessing it from a rent perspective. However, utilities is one of the one of the ways that a person can get relief from the county through that program. For homeowners, which I know is a is a concern as well, there's CDBG and CSBG grants that are in place at the at the county as well. They are not quite funded as highly as the Emergency Rent Assistance Program. However, they do have funding, and that funding is for residents of Arapahoe County outside the city of Aurora. So that includes Inglewood. And then ultimately, there's a Low Income Energy Assistance Program, which is offered through Arapahoe County as well. That's more of a heating, but that's another area where there's utility assistance. So as a summary, this is this is what we have found from a short term cap perspective is the emergency rent assistance would be something that is COVID impacted, is renters for non-Aurora citizens. Like I talked about the funding at 9.8, and it's 80% of the area median income, which my next slide will show you what that really means. That's a that's actually a higher threshold than what we had talked about at 250% of the of the poverty level. On the CDBG and CSBG, you can see it's COVID and non-COVID impacted homeowners, non-Aurora citizens. Like I said, it's not funded as much, but there is still sufficient funding there. And then it's 80% of AMI or 200% of federal poverty level. And if you look at the note below, normally that's 125% of federal poverty level. But due to COVID, they have upped the eligibility to 200% of federal poverty level. What does that mean in terms of income eligibility for area median income? If you look at 250% of federal poverty level for a household of two people, it's $43,100. If you're a household of two people under the 80% AMI, it's $64,000. So you can see there's a higher threshold of eligibility for citizens who may be experiencing issues with paying their utilities or or rent in in other instances. So, shoot, sorry. So as I talked about, our our longer term approach would be to look at somehow formalizing a more in-house program that would allow us to also capitalize on the donations, which I know was a was a program that the council was interested in and we're interested in in getting in place. I think that one of the things that we thought we could gain from working through the county initially with these programs is to understand potential participation levels and costs. And so if we can steer people, steer as many people as possible to these existing programs that are currently funded and then understand what that looks like as the funding may go away over the next couple of years. That'll give us the ability to understand truly what what level of program we could put in place in the city and understand at what level we should budget or fund it. We would also base it on the 250% of federal poverty level, which is what we talked about, which is similar to where things are are landing right now with the county. And then we would mirror the county's application process to create an ease of of applying for programs for citizens. If they're applying for some programs within the county or applying for a program directly with the city, then there wouldn't be completely different forms. It would we'd try to make them as as similar as possible. This is the Arapahoe County application form that is available right now. And really, what what our goal would be in this next, for the next nine months is through our website, through our communications, through our billing personnel, through our customer service personnel, is to get them pointed in the direction of these programs that are currently in place and funded. And as we as we get more people understanding that these programs are available and and can be accessed, we feel like we will be able to reach more people through that direct through that direct mailing and and direct communication through our customer service personnel than than if we had just set up a program and stuck it in place. So that's a that's where we stand today. That's that's really where we've landed based on our discussions with Arapahoe County and and wanted to get some feedback from the council in terms of how that's how that's looking.
Thank you, Director Van Rye. I realize we we were already over time, so I'm not going to I'm going to try and keep us on track here. And I realize you have a couple of different things here. What do you exactly need from us from this section?
It's real it's really, it's an update. It was it's slightly different than what we had talked about. And that was that came as a result of really the practicality of working with Arapahoe County. We, you know, we they have limited staffing and they're trying to spend a lot of federal money that's coming through COVID relief bills. And that was something that we didn't necessarily anticipate when we were thinking through partnering with Arapahoe County. The the silver lining in all that is there's a lot of funding available that would lessen any amount of pressure on the general fund to fund this kind of relief, yet still get our customers access to relief if they are truly experiencing hardship.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I think it's a wonderful update. And we'll let everybody weigh in on anything in terms of the very specifics of it. If you have new questions because of the new information, otherwise, if you can also state, you know, keep going, keep keep going further, that'd be great. Member Russell, let you start.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Van Rye. So what happens when the CARES money goes away? Then are are our citizens going to be cut off completely?
So when the CARES money goes away, which we understand with this latest round is either 2024 or 2025, that that ERA program would be no longer in place. Our our goal would be to have a city fund, city program funded in place at that point in time and transition away from that federal funding, which is more of a short term funding into a longer term funded program through the general fund like we had originally envisioned last fall when we were talking about this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? Mayor Portem Siera.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Van Rye. I guess I just have a question. Is there any way that we we will be able to make citizens aware of the Arapahoe County programs? Either as part of their their bill or any other method that, you know, you and staff have considered?
Yeah, so what we're doing right now is we're building out, we're building out a website infrastructure essentially on on the new website. We've got a we're pointing people to a cap page. And on that cap page will be And on that cap page will be direct links to the Arapahoe County programs. Now that, that works for people who have internet access and who have computer access. Additionally, we are, we are working on direct mailers and, and direct communications for people who may not necessarily have access to the internet to be able to get to those same Arapahoe County programs. Once you get to the Arapahoe County program, it's my understanding that you actually at that point in time, work with an individual or someone at the county to help you work through the process on an in-person basis. That's my, that's my understanding of how the program works.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
I'll follow up with that, too. Is, is there a way to do phone calls to people or a letter if they're behind on their payments that would alert them to this program as well?
That is absolutely something that we, we can do and we will know at, at the time if their, if their bill or bills are getting in arrears more than 30 or 60 days, we can, we can reach out to them and, and let them know that there are programs out there to help them.
That's great. Well, I, I'm really pleased that there's a stopgap here of extra money that we can utilize and then plan out into the next three years to have a budget in place to handle it from there. Gives us a lot of time to do that. I think this program is great. I'm really pleased. So from my perspective, keep moving on it.
Okay, well, we will do that and we will get the advertisements out and, and point people and, and like I said, try to get as many people connected to it as possible who are experiencing difficulty with their bills.
Great, thank you. You also have the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item 7. It's Utility Monthly Billing Update. And you are here along with Jennifer Walker, our Utilities Manager of Administration, to present this and the conversion from quarterly to monthly, which has not been easy for some people when they didn't realize it was coming.
So that's the, so yes, that's the next item on the slideshow. This is another item that we talked about as we were moving through the rate and fee process to move away from quarterly billing to monthly billing. One of the main reasons for this is to help people budget on a monthly basis for their bills as opposed to getting that big bill on a quarterly basis and being surprised by a much more substantial bill than a, than a smaller bill. Additionally, when you compound the increases that we, that we worked through last year, it makes it easier to budget on a monthly basis as opposed to as seeing that, seeing a significant increase on a quarterly basis. We have been working frantically, very a number of staff and our consulting team has been working to transition from quarterly billing to monthly billing over the last really, really earnestly over the last, last two and a half months. And it is, we are, it's a lot of work. So there's, there's a lot of accounts. We are only doing this for inside-city people right now. So we're, we're not doing anything with the external connector district bills or anything like that. This is for City of Englewood users. So what we've done is we have worked at, when you transition from quarterly to monthly, it, it, each area gets a different transition phase as you move through that transition. So as we bill quarterly, we would bill one quadrant a, a month for three months. So, so the first thing you have to understand is we have three quadrants. We are considering renaming those to something other than quadrants because a quadrant indicates four. We have three. So as a, as a math geek, it bothers me every time I see it, but you know, we, we will keep moving forward and we'll change the nomenclature someday down the road. There's a, so how it works right now is quadrant, quadrant run bills in January, then the next quadrant's February, and then the next quadrant is March. And so we're taking all of that and we're compressing it to April. And so beginning April, which is when the new rates and fees go into effect on April 1st for water and sewer, we are going to transition people away from that quadrant to, or that, that, that quarterly billing to the monthly billing. So for some, for some people, it's a seamless transition. You do your one quarter and then you're straight into your month. For the other two, there's a transition period where you only have a portion of a quadrant and you have a portion of a month. Add to that the compounding factor of water is billed in arrears and sewer, storm, and concrete are billed forward. And so that creates another layer of, of difficulty as we make these changes. Now Jennifer and her staff and, and T1 have worked very hard at making sure that we've accounted for all the scenarios that happen so that we can predict what we would expect people's bill to look like as those transitions occur. You can see the other, the other aspect of this is reading month is, is the reading of meters. And so right now, we read one quadrant a month, and now we'll be reading all, the entire city every month. And so we've worked with, and this is what Angela and her staff have been working on, is refining our routes to make them more efficient. And then also, we've, we've been able to hire some new staff members, two of which have had previous meters experience. And so that's been very helpful. We have a, a couple additional staff that have, have we, we have one more staff person that we anticipate starting in early April, which will be great. And so that'll get us fully staffed with four people in meters, and we think we'll be, we'll be covered as it relates to being able to read all the meters through the city as well as respond to customer service requests and those kinds of things. So those are the two aspects of this that are happening. The, the, the most significant thing that you will all see is a, is a biller or a mailer that will be coming out this week. And so I would anticipate this to be hitting every residence in the city sometime this week. We, it went to the printer last week, and so it's just a matter of getting it mailed out. And this is the, this is what it will basically tell everybody is your quarterly bill is moving to monthly. It lists on the lower left-hand, it lists the main reasons why it's budget billing. It's, it also helps with leak detection. And so if you've got a leak that's been, that goes on for two months and you don't realize it until your bill racks up with a lot of water usage, it's harder to respond. Whereas if you're on a one month, then the, the maximum period that you could have a, a leak be draining or be costing you money is 30 days at that point in time. So it really helps from a leak detection and a water waste perspective. And then it also aligns with, with other front-range billing practices. This is, is very common. All of our, the majority of our adjacent water and wastewater providers are on a monthly schedule. What I talked about before as it relates to transitions, you can see on the right-hand side, depending on where the quadrant is, you will see and the timing of the reading of the meters, you can see what the dates are as it relates to when you would see your quarterly bill transition to a monthly bill. So every, every homeowner in the, in the city will receive a transition bill where it's going to be partially quarterly and it's going to be partially monthly. So it's not going to be, it's not going to be just a one, one to the other. And then after that transition bill, they should receive their, their new monthly bill. So we anticipate that we are probably going to get a lot of calls because people, it's, it's not gonna, it may not make sense because you're merging two different structures and the bill we will need to walk people through. But at least this gives people an understanding of what they would, what they could expect. We've also included a sample bill so that they can see what their, the changes from the quarterly to monthly. And the couple of things I'll point out is we do highlight the capital improvement fee for water. We want people to know that that's a new fee. Additionally, you can see the number of billing days and the usage, which is in thousands of gallons. And so it's 91 days and 18,000 gallons versus 30 days and 6,000 gallons. And this is where we have a link to the customer assistance program at the bottom. And then the other piece is we've, we want to steer people to getting a auto pay online set up with their bills so that it's just more of a a seamless monthly occurrence that, that happens where we're not sending out paper bills and it's, it's just a, it's a automatic transaction. Would you like me to stop for questions or would you like me to keep going?
Actually, we have one from Member Questa.
Me? I, I didn't intend to have my hand up.
Oh, it's up. Did I put it up? I don't think so. All right, it's down now. I'm wondering if we can, I mean, I think we've seen these before. If there's a change, if there's changes in them, maybe that would be able to go.
The, the last, this is my last slide. This tells you which of the three quadrants you're in.
Can you, could you just call them sectors?
We can, I, we, we thought of sections, you know, section one, section two, section three. Yes. There are a number of different names for these that, that indicate something other than the four.
Yeah, it's unfortunate we can't get four quadrants out of the cities. Make it easy on you, but, oh, Councilmember Ward, you're next.
So I like quadrants. I think it speaks to Englewood's quirkiness, three quadrants. But beyond that, I, I strongly support monthly utility billing. The quarterly bill has perplexed and upset me for quite some time. It's a nice chunk of change once every three months. You know, if I was smart, I'd be saving the first two months for, to pay the big bill third month. Sometimes I don't accomplish that task. So I think monthly makes a lot more sense, especially as we are beginning to increase rates to pay for infrastructure.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell, you're next.
Thank you. So something just occurred to me. I don't know why this didn't occur to me before. The $15 monthly fee that has been added on, is it to cover the administrative costs of going to monthly?
No, it is, it is a capital investment fee. So it is for capital. It is for projects and investment in the infrastructure, the water infrastructure.
Okay, so have we, the increases that we made, obviously, we've had to hire more help to go monthly. Will that?
We, we actually haven't. We haven't hired additional help. With the exception of Finance Director Lo and I have talked about sharing a temp during the transition period because instead of people coming to pay their bill to the counter quarterly, it'll now happen more frequently monthly. And then to really just help load level for phone calls that we expect to receive through the first three months of this transition.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. And there will still be people that come. I have, I have one person that called me just a couple of months ago when City Hall was closed, and they have always come to City Hall to pay their bill. So there will still be people coming to City Hall.
And that will still be an option and it will, they will now just get to visit City Hall 12 times a year instead of four times a year.
Right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other hands up. So nice work on this.
Okay.
Go forward.
I, I forgot one other thing. We are working also on a frequently asked questions sheet that we want to get, we will get to all of you as well. So that when you get questions about the bill or about anything related to the rates and fees, we'll have that information readily available for you. We're going to give it to our staff, our meter reading staff, as well as we wanted to get it to all of you as well. So that is, that is in development. We are very close.
All right, thank you. So you're also in this next section, which is Agenda Item 8, Sewer Connector District's Rate Analysis. And again, Director of Utilities and South Platte Renew, Peter Van Rye is here, and Santik Consultant Carol Molesky to present and discuss with council the feedback regarding the adjustments, adjustments to the rate structure for the connector districts outside of city limits.
Okay, this is, this is another item that we've talked about a number of times as it relates to how we bill our connector agreements and the, the people outside of the City of Englewood. When we last talked about this, I promised that I would come back to you by the end of the first quarter, and we made that by nine days. And so always deadline-driven, but we're, we're here today to talk about what we found on that. And so some background on this. So the City of Englewood builds 50,000 outside-city customers. So that's outside accounts for connector districts for wastewater treatment. That's for South Platte Renew, which is the large wastewater facility co-owned by Englewood and Littleton. Currently today, there is a 5% surcharge added to the treatment charge. And it, in the code, it says it accounts for inflow and infiltration. So that's the, the water that comes in through leaks in the piping, leaks in the interceptor system, or if there's a manhole cover that's removed, water that flows right in. What we wanted to do is, is, and based on council direction, we went back to look at, to see what we, what we, what the multiplier should be based on an industry-accepted approach to billing outside city customers. And so what that would look at was, was the additional costs incurred by the city, so administrative costs to bill as well as investment risk because the owner is the City of Englewood and the City of Littleton. So there is an inherent risk of ownership that, that goes along with that. So if the, if the state issued a notice of violation or a consent decree, they would issue it to the two cities, no one beyond that. So it's the, it becomes the city's responsibility from a liability perspective as well as that continued incorporation of the INI component that's already been accounted for. This is an industry-accepted approach that we took. So we, we went with how this is done across the country. It's based on a, it's based on a, a procedure that's outlined in the American Water Works Association Manual M1, which is on rates and fees. The Water Environment Federation, which is wastewater side, has a very similar approach. It, what it looks at is there are two essential categories. There's a, there are owners and there are non-owners. And so owners are people within size, within the city corporate limits that have invested in South Platte Renew assets. Non-owners are those outside the city corporate limits, and those rates recognize that inherent risks associated with that investment and that liability component. There are two different methodologies, utility basis for revenue requirements, a rate multiplier. And we went with the rate multiplier one. We think it's more straightforward and it's a very commonly used approach. So this is essentially how this comes about. When we did the analysis, we looked at the total revenue requirement for 2021. We looked at inside customers and outside customers based on that definition. We talked about the, the assumed risk of the investment for inside customers. And then there's a surcharge that the outside customers pay to compensate the owners of the system, which then results in a calculated multiplier. There is a significant amount of work that goes into coming up with that number. The number that was calculated was 1.21. We rounded that down to 1.20. And to give you an idea of what that means for an outside customer in the, in, of those 50,000 accounts, what, what that would mean. So if, if they're using a 6,000 gallons per month, which is very typical for sewer, their annual treatment charge right now is $272.63, which equates to $22.72, 72 cents a month. If we move from a 1.0, 1.05 multiplier to 1.2 multiplier, that goes up $3.41 a month to $26.13. So it's 340, 341 generally a month is what your outside customer would see by changing from the 1.05 to the 1.20. Now again, that's a single-family home using 6,000 gallons, which is, which is very common. However, there are people who use more water. There are people, they're commercial. So if that all scales up based on our, um, single-family equivalent ratios that we've talked about last year. But that gives you an idea of what that multiplier equates to from a, from a, a particular account per month basis. What that means when you multiply it across 50,000 accounts is that it's around $2 million more of, a year into the, the sewer enterprise fund for the City of Englewood. And so the other thing we wanted to do was make sure that there wasn't something out there that prohibited this. And so we looked at, we looked all over and we found, what we kept coming across, coming back to was the provision in the connector agreement, which is Section 6, 6. And I'll read what it says. It says, "The city may impose and collect reasonable fees, tolls, and charges which shall be uniform as to all outside-city users for the services provided by the city under this connector agreement." And so really, it, it comes down to reasonable fees and charges. So that's where we went back and we looked at what's the industry-accepted approach. And does that, does that conform with reasonable? Another, just for example, Boulder does the same thing with outside connector districts for, or outside users for wastewater treatment, and their multiplier is 1.5. users for, uh, wastewater treatment, and their multiplier is one point five. And so you can see that there's a wide variety. Now, now their services are gonna be unique to them and their, their costs and their, their system is uni- unique to them. What that does, it gives you a sense for, for what the range is. Right now, we're at one point zero five. Another agency is all the way up to one point five. We're proposing that one point two seems like reasonable, a reasonable approach based on our, based on our analysis. So let me move on. So what does that mean? So this is what we, what we talked about last year as it relates to the funding of the, uh, sewer, uh, sewer fund, uh, requirements, the majority of which are capital investments into South Platte Renew. And you can see that there is a significant amount of debt funded, seventy-four percent debt funded. Now, this, this works based on the rate increase regime that we put together for the next ten years. And it does, it, we can issue this kind of debt and still make, meet our debt coverages and all those kinds of things, debt ratios. However, it is, it is more debt. If we were to impose this kind of an out, uh, uh, this change in the outside city multiplier, essentially what it does is it means we cash fund more of this, um, more of the, the projects. And so the money doesn't, the money comes in and then immediately invests into the, uh, the, the predominance of it invests into the, uh, the South Platte Renew infrastructure needs. And what it does is it, it brings down that debt requirement down to thirty-eight percent to further continue to invest in the needs for, um, South Platte Renew. So that's really the, the, what, one of the main things that it does is it helps to eliminate that, that borrowing pressure or limit that borrowing pressure to make it more, um, to just make it a better mix between cash and, and, um, cash and, uh, debt funded. Would you like me to stop now or I'm, I'm almost done?
Uh, okay. Why don't we finish and then let's come back, Member Ward, if you don't mind?
Okay, so the next steps are, uh, we have to meet with the connector districts on this. They are very interested in this. Uh, they have, uh, reached out and expressed concern about our approach. And so we wanna go, we wanna go through that approach with them and, and, and show them that, um, how we came about, uh, what we came, how we came about the one point two. Uh, we wanna get their feedback. Um, additionally, if there's, there's something out there that we missed, we wanna make sure that we're doing it appropriate to what we, we think we are legally able to do and, and through the industry accepted approach. Once we get to a point where we feel like we've, um, satisfied those requirements, we would then move forward to update the municipal, you municipal code to change it from one point zero five to whatever the settled number is. Right now, it's proposed at one point two. Assuming that stays in place, that would, that would be what we'd update it to. We had originally, uh, thought that maybe we'd be able to get this in place before the, uh, next round of annual billing for the outside connector districts. Uh, we may have been a bit, um, optimistic in terms of doing that because I think we, we should talk to our connector districts. However, I will, uh, defer to the council in terms of a direction on this. I think, I think getting with them and getting them to understand our methodology, uh, will probably take some time because they'll want their consultants and their, um, uh, experts to look to ensure that there's an agreement. And then, um, we're not sure that we'd be able to get that all complete by the June first, uh, uh, billing date, which is the first of the, uh, um, outside district billing, um, annual billing days. And I'm now, and now I'm ready for questions.
All right, Councilmember Ward, start us off.
Do we have connector districts that serve customers inside the city of Englewood boundaries?
We do.
So if we're doing something like this, we would potentially be charging a surcharge to citizens of the city of Englewood.
No, because they're considered owners. And so as an owner, they would not get charged the surcharge because they would be classified as an owner in that circumstance. So from a treatment perspective, they would only, they would not get, they would not get the surcharge.
So if they're part of the connector district, and the connector district is paying a surcharge, how do we separate the people who live inside the Englewood boundaries from the rest of the people who live in the connector district?
We have those separated right now because they're, they're, they're separated in the billing system.
Okay.
And so, um, the, 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 one of the biggest ones that we have an external district, and I know council has asked about this and, and I, I promise you, we are looking at this. We, we just haven't, we haven't dug into it with the level of, of detail that we need to, is the South Englewood Sanitation District, which serves a third of the city. And the way the, uh, the way the, the charge is developed is it's a fifty, it's a point five five multiplier. So it's a one point five five. And that point five five multiplier on the treatment charge is what covers the collection system costs. And so that's the part that we, we want to understand from them in terms of how that the same way we did an analysis here, we want to understand how their analysis links those two things. That is, as we're talking about the, the next steps out of rates and fees, that is one of the next, uh, things that we, uh, we are, we plan to look into because it does affect so many residents across the, the city. There are also a couple of other districts, um, that serve other smaller areas of the city. They have the same, same type of thing. The, the, the ratios are anywhere, anywhere from one point one, one point four, one point five five.
Thank you. Next is Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. And so Director Van Rye, um, in the example that you used, you said that the average, um, home could use six thousand gallons of water or sewer rates based on water usage?
It's, it's, they're based on the, uh, the winter, uh, the winter flow. And so they, they, they get a winter flow amount. And then the way the rate structure is set up at the, in the city of Englewood, and this is across all, uh, rates for sewer rates, is there's a minimum flow number and that's six thousand gallons. So the rate structure is built off that, that minimum number. So that's where it establishes, when I, when I talked about six thousand gallons, that's that typical house is charged that based on that minimum flow rate.
Okay, so even though probably a lot of the connector districts don't have Englewood water, so we don't really know how much they're using, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, it would be based on their, I might defer to, I'm, I'm gonna reach out to Carol and see if she has a better answer on this one. Um, and, um, sorry, Carol, to put you on the spot. Do you have a, do you have a thought on that?
No, that's, that's perfectly fine. And Jennifer Walker, Walker would probably have a, the most firsthand knowledge, but for those customers in the outside districts or the connector districts that don't have Englewood water, the city receives water meter readings from those connector districts in order to calculate that estimated sewer flow.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director Van Rye. You're, uh, just to, to understand more what this conver- conversation with the connector districts will entail. Do I, am I understanding you correctly that there's a, a more complex analysis than what we've seen here? Just, you know, your kind of final number of one point two. You have some kind of a mathematical analysis based on our particular situation that's brought that, brought that one point two out as the appropriate amount based on these industry standards? Or is this, is there just kind of a rain, a national, nationally, just kind of a range in terms of those multipliers that you're using?
No, this is, this is based on our actual information. And yes, there's a complex set of spreadsheets that looks at the depreciated value of the assets in South Platte Renew. It looks at the, the weighted average cost of capital. Uh, there's a number of elements that go into this analysis that then, uh, ultimately calculate to one point two one, and then we, we just rounded it to one point two zero. And that's the information that we'd be sharing with the connector districts so that their consultants could look through it and say, all right, we agree with this or we don't agree with this, or, or, um, or really get an understanding of their level of comfort with, with our analysis. Because we, you know, we, it's one of those things where we, we followed the accepted approach by, by the industry. And the numbers come out to what the numbers are. And then it becomes an interpretation of, of the inputs of those, uh, of those calculations and maybe some of the outputs. And that's really where we get into the explanation of how we made the assumptions that we made to generate the numbers that, that ultimately go into the calculations.
Okay. Good. Thank you. That's helpful. And then, um, just a follow-up question is, do you, since this is a South Platte Renew thing, you have to go to Littleton and get approval for this multiplier as well?
This is actually an Englewood utilities thing. So right now I have my Englewood utilities hat on. The, the costs are predominantly driven by South Platte Renew. So South Platte Renew is essentially a line item on the Englewood sanitary, Englewood Sewer Enterprise Fund. It's, and it's the biggest line item. And so this is the, because the, the connector agreements have the agreement with the city of Englewood. And so South Platte Renew is just managed separately as the re, as the, uh, the, the joint, uh, facility that serves the southwest metro area. However, it, uh, it, it, those agreements are through the city. So Littleton could do their, their own analysis, uh, on this.
Got it. So Littleton may have, has their own connector districts that they would, they would then do something like this with if they desire.
They do. And, and the unique, the, the added complication is some of the connector districts come through both Englewood and Littleton. And so that's, that's another thing that we, you know, there's, there's a large amount of coordination that goes with this that we wanna, that you're, you're raising questions that are actually ones that have been raised to us as it relates to, well, how do we ensure that there's consistency? And, and in this instance, the city of Englewood service is through the city of Englewood Sewer Enterprise Fund. And that's the piece that we're talking about here is just those connector districts.
So that, sorry, Mayor, I.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that member Questa is okay with.
Go ahead, Member Questa.
Go ahead, Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Van Rye. My question kind of ties in with Member Anderson. So beyond the power of persuasion, what, what leverage do the connector districts have as, as we reach our conclusion on, on what that, what that number should be?
Well, I, I, you know, I mean, these, I, I don't know that there's necessarily a, I guess it comes down to interpretation of what the agreement states, or if there's something else that we missed out there as it relates to. If there's, if there's another, if there's another written document or written agreement that's, that is a complement to the connector agreement. And in the connector agreement, it's the interpretation, I would say, of the, the, the phrase, "Collect reasonable fees, tolls, and charges." And so that's where we are linking industry accepted approach to, uh, reasonable. And so it really, it's a hard question to answer.
Okay, that's very good. I guess a, a follow-up question. I mean, are these the kind of things that ever end up in court? You're aware of?
These kinds of things do end up in court. And, and we would, we would like to not have that happen.
Of course, of course. Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Director Van Rye, is there also, is this one of the reasons why Littleton is looking at other options? Is that this is.
In terms of rates and fees?
Yeah.
Uh, well, they're, they were going.
Separate district.
I'm sorry, say that again?
And a separate district.
You know, I'm not exactly sure. I have not, I have a, I have a meeting with, uh, um, the Director of Public Works down there. I'm, I'm trying to get one scheduled in the next week or two to get more of an understanding of, of how their rate and fee process is going and what they're thinking in terms of, of, of these kinds of analyses as well. And I just have not had a chance to connect up with them yet.
And so tonight, what you need from us is just for us to know this and, and know that it's gonna take a little longer to figure it out?
Yeah, it's really, I wanted to report back to let you know that we have done the analysis. We have come up with what we think is a, is an acceptable, reasonable industry accepted approach. That, like I said, the, the monthly impact is three dollars and forty-one cents a month. So we're not talking about, it, it's hard when you talk percentages versus dollars because, you know, you can look at a fifteen percent as this huge number, when in actuality, it's, it's three dollars and forty-one cents a month, which is eleven and a half cents a day. So if we're, if we're getting down to what the real dollars amount is, it's, it's, it's a, it's not as significant as it may sound. However, it is, it is an increase and it is a, an unplanned increase. So one of the things that might come out of this is, is a, a phasing it in, you know? So maybe it's not initially the full uh, one point two. Maybe there's a step procedure to getting there. Uh, the other thing is, once we get through our, our monthly billing for, uh, the city of Englewood, we would like to get to a monthly billing for all the, all the connector districts that we do the billing for. So that's not an annual hit. What they get is an annual hit. So they don't think about it for the entire year, and then all of a sudden they get a three hundred dollar bill for their sewer service. And, and we think that, again, building that into a more reasonable monthly, um, schedule would help people absorb this and, and budget for it more easily.
Makes sense. Uh, Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this goes back to the monthly billing really on the other piece because all of a sudden it hit me that a lot of people living on fixed incomes are paid at certain times of the month. Like, so what day of the month is the, uh, bill gonna be due, the water?
Jennifer, would you mind, do you, could you, uh, chime in on the, uh, the day the bill goes out versus the day that it's due?
Director Van Rye, can you also take your shared screen down, maybe?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I don't usually notice it, but I'm realizing it's probably annoying.
Yep. I apologize for that. Uh, I'm not sure if, uh, oh, there she is.
So the bills will be due in a thirty-day time period. So if, if it's billed April first, it will be due May first. If it is billed May seventh, it will be, uh, or I'm sorry, if it's billed April seventh, it will be due May seventh, April fourteenth, May fourteenth.
So is there any way that people could get their name on the list for billing at a certain date of the month because of where their, uh, paycheck comes in?
We, in that instance, we, we bill by quadrant. And so that has to do with me, reading meters and, and how we, how we cycle through the city. And so it's, it's hard to do a one-off for, if they're in the quadrant one, to say, we will, we would like to have our bill due on the fourteenth if the entire quadrant is in the same, is on the first. And so, so that's, that's a, that's probably a customization that, uh, we, we are not able to do because of how we read the bill, read the meters and, and set up the billing.
Okay, but I think that could be problematic for some people in that, um, in that group on fixed incomes. So.
Well, and that's why, and that's why we have the thirty days. And so they do have any time within that thirty days to pay that bill. So in theory, between April first, or April seventh and May seventh, they should be able to time the payment of that bill to whenever that, uh, whenever their income comes in because of, it falls within that one month period.
Okay, so if they pay it early, it's no big deal then?
Sure, yeah. We, we welcome people to pay them early.
Exactly. You're using the money instead of them. So, all right, thank you.
And that's what the cap is there for as well. So, but I, I do think that, um, planning it one month might be off for some people once it starts. I don't know. So it's helping people understand that's gonna happen and it can put some people over the edge. All right. I don't see any more comments or questions. So thank you very much, um, Director Van Rye. It's a lot of complicated work.
Yeah, well, so we'll move forward with the meeting with the connector districts next. And depending on how that's going, we'll report back to council, I would assume. It's, it'll probably be a few months before we come back and talk about how those discussions are going. So like I said, I, I thought maybe we'd be able to get into this year's billing cycle. I don't know that we're realistically gonna be able to do that. And so we'll, we'll work to get back as soon as possible, uh, but realizing that it might take some time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council, we're due for a break. I just want to acknowledge, uh, the situation in Boulder. Many of us may have been paying attention before we started and it sounds like, the shooting is over. There have been numerous deaths, including a police officer. So we hold Boulder in our hearts tonight. In our prayers, please be thinking of them as they try to unwind. as they try to unwind what's going on there. Let's take a ten minute break to seven thirty. Thank you. All right, Council. It's hard to come back when we start to realize what's going on in the midst of a meeting, but let's see if we can do this agenda justice tonight and, uh, finish and love our loved ones, reach out to people you know. Uh, our next item is ten, uh, the Unified Development Code Assessment Report. Uh, this is informational and direction. Uh, Planning Manager Wade Burkholder and Logan Simpson, Representative Jennifer Gardner are here to present, to discuss the City Council, the UDC Assessment Report. Thank you for being here.
So, good evening, Mayor Olson and members of council. We're pleased to be here tonight to present to you all the final Unified Development Code Assessment Report. Uh, just a few quick introductions first. Uh, we also have on the presentation Jennifer Gardner from Logan Simpson, as well as Mark White from White and Smith Planning and Law Group, uh, both who were instrumental in completing this final draft and working through the process with the city staff. So we will, uh, have some, uh, words from them, uh, here after I give a brief introduction, uh, to the process. So the focus of the last five months, a- as we worked on this report was to listen to as many members of the community as possible with regard to what is working with the existing Unified Development Code. And conversely, uh, what isn't working or maybe missing out of the current Unified Development Code. So in your, uh, final assessment report, you will see exhibits B, C, and D, uh, which all, uh, are exhibits which showcase the public outreach efforts in more detail. Uh, all of the polls, uh, that were, uh, distributed and taken, all the results are found within those appendix to the document. So in this final assessment report, this really signals the end of the first phase of this overall Unified Development Code project. And we will get into the next steps towards the end of our presentation of what comes, uh, following this. Um, you, um, will hear a lot of details tonight. We, in the interest of time, will not go through every detail, but this is just an overall, uh, presentation for you all to start thinking about. Uh, how we can use this document as the roadmap or the blueprint, uh, document for moving into the next stage, which is that all important rewrite of the code. Before I turn it over to Jennifer, I want to just say three points to, that I want us to all keep in mind. Uh, the first point is a very important point. Uh, this is not the end of the conversation on any of this, uh, any of these topics. During the rewrite, there will be ample additional opportunity to brighten thoughts in public meetings uh, as to, you know, what's working, not working and so forth. So this is not the end of the conversation tonight. It's just again, to present the roadmap of what we've heard so far. Secondly, uh, there have been no policy decisions made during this process. The steering committee that was formed, uh, was a steering committee, uh, in, in, in that name, in that they did not have any, uh, policy authority. They, they did not have any recommending authority. Uh, they were used as a sounding board to talk through some of these, uh, more weighty topics that we, we heard throughout the process. So there is no, uh, policy decisions that have been made. And lastly, uh, there has not been any code written or rewritten at this point. Again, I just want to reiterate that this first stage of the process was to listen and engage with as many residents of the community as we could. And so, uh, that's what we did. And you have the document in front of you for, um, your use as to what we heard in the roadmap going forward. So that said, I will have a few more comments at the end of the presentation, but at this point, I will turn it over to Jennifer.
Great. Thank you, Wade. Thank you, Mayor and, uh, council members. Um, may I share my screen? Looks like I can. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, so, quick agenda for this evening. Uh, as Wade already went into the introduction and project overview, I'll talk a little bit about the organization of the document. Some general suggestions, some suggestions by chapter, open it up for discussion and some next steps from Wade. We might swap those last two items. So, um, the document you have in front of you, the basic overall, uh, um, organization of the document is, it starts with an introduction, an, an overview of the whole project purpose, um, so on and so forth. A code structure overview, public engagement overview. This is kind of a, just a high level summary of the public engagement. And as Wade mentioned, there is a much more detailed summary of all the engagement efforts towards the end in the appendices. Um, a discussion of the five topics, priority topics that resulted from all of the, uh, public outreach. An overview and suggestions for generally for the code. And then we went through a chapter by chapter, um, discussion of potential updates. Get my mouse in the right place here. Um, just briefly, the alternative code structures that are included towards the beginning of the document, just discuss different uh, code structures that are available. Um, typically, most codes use a more blended structure, which is what was, uh, suggested with this code assessment. Um, there are ten guiding principles included at the beginning of the document. Uh, we developed these. Um, a lot of these are just kind of general guiding principles, best practices to be used in, in updating codes. So I'm not gonna go into any of them in detail, but I do want to highlight that, uh, some of the tenants of this project were to, um, focus on making a code that's user friendly, balances flexibility and certainty, um, and provides clear and fluid administrative processes. Um, I do also want to hit on the five topics, the five that I mentioned previously. The five main topics are, that surfaced from that outreach were residential development standards, uh, and design standards, neighborhood character, housing attainability, parking and walkability, sustainability and green infrastructure. And, um, the way that this, uh, presentation tonight was organized was just kind of top to bottom, giving you guys an overview of uh, all the suggestions that, uh, we had after the outreach and, and extensive review with staff and, um, many different board members, planning commission, our steering committee. Uh, so I'm gonna walk through kind of the three top, um, the top three suggestions for kind of overall enhancements to the code. And then when we get into the chapter by chapter, uh, since you all have the document in front of you, I'm not gonna read every bullet, but I'm gonna highlight the, uh, suggestions that relate back to those top five priority topics. So we can kind of see how those are woven throughout the suggestions. So, um, our first kind of overall update suggestion would be graphic enhancements. There are very few graphics in the current UDC. And a lot of times it's, um, it, it's just, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words. So illustrating some of the, uh, dimensional standards and some of the language is very helpful to make a document more user friendly. Uh, better sequencing, so looking at reorganizing to put more substantive, substantive provisions in the front of the document and the, uh, more technical provisions near the, the back of the document. And then integration of terms, uh, just incorporating policy, uh, document, incorporation of policy document goals and purpose statements. Um, as, as Wade said, no policy decisions have been made, but we do build on the policy that exists within the city of Englewood. So Englewood Forward Comprehensive Plan, Transportation Master Plans, Downtown Master Plans, all of those plans, um, really are our roadmap in updating and, and assessing and, uh, a code update, or a code. So, uh, we suggested integrating those terminologies and, and purpose statements into, into the code update to tie those together. Okay, suggestions by chapter. So there's eleven chapters in the current UDC. Um, chapter one is general provisions. And we did recommend or suggest, um, through this. Chapter one is general provisions, and we did recommend or suggest through this assessment to reorganize chapters one and two slightly. These were the chapters that would take more of that technical information to the back of the document, so we could bring that substantive information to the front. So not a lot to do in chapter one, minor reorganization, a little bit of cleanup, removing and/or conjunctions when you have and slash or, it provides, it can lead to some confusion, so really clearing that up and making more straightforward interpretations. Chapter two is development review and approval procedures. Again, this is another, a whole chapter that could be moved to the end of the document. You see a few bullets here, minor cleanup, and there wasn't anything major that stood out in this chapter. I will say, most of the substantive changes do show up in chapter six, so when I get to chapter six, we'll spend a lot more time. Zone districts, again, retain the structure. We didn't find any major issues with the zone districts themselves, the way that they are laid out. There was some discussion of providing some more introductory statements, more intent statements at the beginning of each zone district to help enforce the language. Floodplain regulations show up in chapter four. One of our suggestions, floodplain regulations can easily get rolled into chapter five, the, or no, sorry. We want to make sure that the floodplain regulations get updated to match the language, any updated language in chapter five. Other than that, retaining the content, simplifying any of the language, floodplain regulations are heavily guided by FEMA, and so there's not a lot to be done with this chapter either. There are a lot of definitions in this chapter, and primarily throughout the whole document, definitions show up in chapter 11 consolidated, so one suggestion would be to remove those definitions and consolidate them down with the definitions in chapter 11. Chapter five is the use regulations. All code updates end up with quite a bit of work in the use regulations section to modernize uses, ensure that uses are up-to-date, organized, collaborated with all other sections of the code. Reclassifying limited uses, accessory uses as permitted, conditional accessory, or temporary uses is something that needs to be looked at. And then there was quite a bit about automotive uses that was identified as needing to be cleaned up a bit. But, so use regulations, even though these bullets look pretty straightforward, they do, they take a pretty big chunk of your code update typically to really work through them and make sure that they are up to the standards of what you're expecting. Revising ADU definitions, relocating adaptive reuse of designated historic buildings to the Historic Preservation Chapter, home occupations. We heard a lot about home occupations throughout the stakeholder or public outreach, so that's definitely something that needs to be looked at. And then revising language to include food vending trucks, that's kind of looking at new trending uses that are coming about. All right, chapter six. So this is where we start to get into a lot more substantive suggestions. So simplifying the ADU dimensional table and include new ADU types and appropriate regulations, and consider expanding those ADU regulations to additional zone districts. Those are two suggestions that hit on the, or address, help address, could help address the housing attainability topic that came up early in the process. This last one is pretty big, adjust bulk plane setback and lot coverage requirements and tailor them to specific neighborhoods. We had quite a bit of discussion through public outreach throughout the whole process about lot dimensional standards, lot coverage, percentage of lot coverage, and this one ties to many different regulations throughout the whole code. It's not just your bulk plane and setback and lot coverage, it's also your pervious area to address drainage, you know, your improving, you know, allowing for better lighting into a property to preserve solar access. All of those kind of get tied in together, so a lot of these are not looked at in isolation, but that one definitely hit exactly on the residential and dimensional standards topic that arose very early on in the process. So chapter six, I should have mentioned, the development standards is broken down into several different subchapters, so that last one was your development standard, your dimensional standard. This next section is on streets and vehicular access and circulation. Not a whole lot of change suggested for this section, other than reflecting current public work standards. So off-street parking, we heard a lot about off-street parking in our public outreach, so all the top four items really address that parking and walkability discussions that we had. One thing that I will note about the first bullet about parking maximums and parking minimums, currently, the Inglewood code has a standard requirement for parking, so if you're in a restaurant versus an office building, there are so many parking spaces per square footage of building required, and that number is, compared to many peer communities, is rather high. And what a lot of communities are doing are adding in a minimum and a maximum, or even just the minimum, which would say, you know, you could reduce that number if you, you know, for those uses, but that doesn't mean you can't add more parking. So you, it helps to accommodate, the minimum and maximum helps to accommodate your local businesses that may feel that they don't need as much parking, but it also accommodates your large national builders who do feel the need for the larger amount of parking. So that's where that suggestion comes in, kind of a minimum-maximum range to allow for that flexibility. And another one in here is reducing overparking by using site-specific parking demand analysis, which would allow for the applicant to put together a number of items that would show what their parking demand is, and then that would allow them to get the right number, right size their parking for their project. So, there's a little bit more on parking later, kind of tied to landscaping, but this was kind of the biggest one. Pedestrian and bicycle access, the biggest one in this section was removing the "shoulds" and changed them to "shall's." It's making the requirements mandatory. Some discussion on increasing planting area to encourage more street trees, again, that leads to that walkability and creating contextual design standards for walkways, bus stops, and transit locations. Senses and retaining walls, again, this section looked really pretty good. We didn't hear a whole lot on senses and retaining walls in our public outreach, other than to maybe add some graphics to help depict some of the standards. I think that would go a long way. There's also site triangle illustrations, and for those of you who don't know what those are, it's where you're looking at when you're coming around a corner, what, you know, where you need to keep a clearance from, so the fence can't go right up to the corner. There were a couple of areas that the site triangles were reflected in fences and in a couple of other sections, and we do actually recommend moving those out to kind of a measurements and measurement section, because it's more, it applies to many other sections, and it doesn't need to be just in the fence section. Landscaping and screening. So the biggest one would be expanding on existing water conservation principles and also implementing an approved and prohibited plant list. I believe there was an approved and prohibited plant list developed in recent years, so we're just recommending implementation of that list. And those both address the sustainability and green infrastructure topic. Design standards and guidelines, strengthening residential design standards to ensure quality Developing specific residential design standards for each zone district or neighborhood was a suggestion that came out of trying to address the neighborhood character topic that came up. So there was some, quite a bit of discussion with our steering committee on this topic, actually, to decide if it was to, well, not to decide, but to kind of bounce the idea off of whether it would be appropriate to add more design standards, more architectural design standards, or form-based design standards that would be more specific to specific neighborhoods or zone districts to try to preserve and achieve a certain character, existing character, so that's where that came out of. Providing additional pervious area standards, I mentioned earlier in the residential dimensional standards that that was one of the topics, so this is where that would show up, and it could help address some of the sustainability and green infrastructure topic. Signs, again, signs were in pretty decent shape with anything, signs are, there's a lot of legal language in signs that would need to be addressed and updated, excuse me. And one suggestion we had was to realign the sign types to zone districts or street classifications rather than land uses. So that's kind of the biggest item there. And then there's definitions incorporated in this chapter, again, similar to the floodplain, we would suggest that, looking at moving those definitions to the definitions chapter The TSA district is actually tied up with some work being done right now by staff, so we did suggest creating a separate form-based ordinance for the TSA district and RTD light rail stations. And actually, there was some really good language in here that we thought might be good to apply to other zone districts, so that would be something to look at in the update. Oops, sorry, guys. I think I skipped one there.
Looks like they're not in order, I think. Maybe, I don't know.
Oh, we missed historic preservation somehow. Sorry about that. Historic preservation is, again, it was, it's a light chapter right now, and after talking to the Historic Preservation Board, we discussed that maybe some additional substance could be added to this chapter to help them enforce what they're trying to do with historic preservation. So now signs, TSA district, and telecommunications. So telecommunications is, again, a very legal-heavy document, so just need to look through and update to revise the content to reflect current telecommunications standards. And again, this is the one that we felt could be combined with chapter five, the use regulations. Oftentimes, telecommunications is considered a use and can be combined into that chapter or put in a separate appendix near the back of the document. Chapter eight, subdivision design improvements and dedication standards, again, this chapter was in pretty good shape, so just some minor cleanup to get it ready to go. Nonconformities, existing nonconformity regulations seem to be in good shape. There was a few very specific revisions that we need to be made to help legibility and enforceability of the document, as you can see here. Enforcement and penalties, again, fairly good shape, just simplifying the language and putting in those cross-references to the city's municipal code. There's quite a few cross-references to other sections of the municipal code in this chapter. And then chapter 11, again, retain the, we suggested to retain the code structure. Definitions are another one, like the use tables. They take quite a bit of massaging throughout the process, reviewing, you know, reviewing them upfront to make sure that they're updated and current. Going back through the document, as the document gets updated, we add definitions to this chapter. We can remove definitions at times if they're no longer relevant to the update. One definition I do want to bring up is, we talked a bit about updating the definition for household to expand on the number of unrelated family, unrelated members, and that was an attempt to address housing attainability. So, and again, matching the new uses with new definitions. So with that, I'm going to pass it back over to Wade to go through some next steps, and then we can open to any questions and discussion.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Just real quick from me, the next steps as we see them. Now that this roadmap is complete with the final assessment, we are ready to advertise for a new request for proposals to be submitted for the actual rewrite. What we would like to do, and what we are planning to do, is in April-May timeframe, is have a steering committee recruitment period, and within that time, we would ask council to make several appointments to that steering committee. As you know, one of the charter requirements of the Planning and Zoning Committee Commission is that they present to you amendments and revisions to the Unified Development Code. So we are proposing to have the Planning and Zoning Commission be a large part of the steering committee process as well, but we want to ask city council to provide some recruitment and interview processes to where we might get possibly five additional steering committee members of city council's suggestion, recommendation to also serve on the steering committee. This will be a very technical, detailed rewrite process. So we are looking for community members that have some sort of design experience or architectural or engineering background to help formulate that, as well as community members at large that have an interest in the new regulations and how the outcome of this project ends up. So we will be coming back to you. We will be starting the recruitment process by social media outreach to get people identified and interested to send in resumes for you all to interview. So if we follow the request for proposal posting tomorrow, we would hopefully have some consulting firm interviews in June. We'd have a contract recommendation to council in June, and then in July, we would look to begin the rewrite process after all the procurement processes are accounted for and finished. So part of the direction we're looking for from you tonight is if this process is amenable to everyone, and we can go ahead and get that started as early as tomorrow, and then start talking about the steering committee formulation, and get the consulting firm in to assist us with this highly technical rewrite, based on the suggestions that you just heard Jennifer go over in brief. So that is what staff is proposing at this time, so I think the next slide is opening the floor for questions.
Thank you. Council member Russell's going to start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this work. So, Mayor, I don't know, what is the process? When we change, when council change, changes the municipal code, does it just get changed? Or do we do the rewrite, and then are there public hearings? And so how does that whole process work?
You're asking me?
Well, I don't know who else is here that can answer that question.
Our city attorney is the one who should be answering that question. Thank you.
And I can answer that question. That is, the council is free to change the municipal code for almost every area of it, unless it somehow would be a change that conflicts with charter, but you would change municipal code through two readings.
Yeah, there are no required public hearings.
There is no required public hearing.
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
City attorney, though, it doesn't mean that we can't hold them, though, right? We can have public hearings or public forums where we get feedback, right?
You could hold a public forum. I would suggest not calling it a public hearing because of, I don't want to bore you with the details, but a public forum would get you to the same place.
No, I remember having this conversation with Allison once, so, all right. No, I remember having this conversation with, with Allison once. So, all right. Others. I have a question about timeline. Mr. Burkholder, so go back to the timeline that you just had up, maybe? So in the rewrite process from July 2021, how long do you believe it might take for this?
I, I would estimate probably 12 months.
Okay. You're going to have a new council, possibly. There's going to be four people. Just so everybody realizes that we did this with the, the comp plan, too, and it actually spanned a little longer than we all intended. And so it'd be a year from now that you would have something. I think the public needs to realize that. And I really appreciated your starting out tonight introducing that no decisions have been made. There isn't anything in place. We have just been collecting data. This takes a long time to do this. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson, your first here.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Burkholder, for all the work that's gone into this so far. I'm really excited about this. This is, this is what I've been, been looking forward to, is really beginning this process. I know the process has been ongoing, gathering feedback and everything. But I guess the, the question I have at this point is, how do you anticipate the rewrite working, kind of with the interplay of gathering, gathering input from the community, from council? Obviously, you don't want to, you know, do a bunch of rewrites that council wouldn't support. How, how is that whole process going to kind of be managed so you make sure the, you know, the rewrites are, are something that we have consensus on and, and have good public support and all that kind of thing?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. How we envision it is, as Jennifer mentioned, we have the five main topics that rose to the top during this initial phase. So the, say, for example, the, the attainability discussion. So we're going to look at that and propose options that council and Planning and Zoning Commission can consider in terms of meeting that goal of, of more attainable housing for the community. So we will look at things like, are we utilizing the accessory dwelling unit code as, as sufficiently as we can? So that's one way to increase attainability. Do we look at code that requires new development to have X percentage of affordable units in it? So there, those main heavier topics that we've heard a lot about will come back and be looked at as a series of options to discuss with everybody. And, and we'll, we'll eventually have to land on, on something. So we will try to, you know, weigh those topics and weigh the comments and see where the community is lying within, you know, more specific details. So that's how we see it happening now and trying to get the best feedback from the new round of public engagement going forward.
So just to follow up, you, you expect to come back to council each, for which each, each of those topics separately for a discuss, like a study session kind of discussion?
We, we haven't finalized specific details like that. I mean, it is certainly an option.
Okay.
Certainly can do that, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll see how it goes. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you for all the work on it. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
This will be an iterative communication process, I think, right? It's going to, it's going to be constant.
It is, it is. Yeah, with something this large, we need to make sure you all are very up to date on things that are being discussed. So we kind of know what you're out to take it.
Great. Mayor Protim Sierra, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to get a little bit more information regarding the steering committee and basically just the, the composition of the steering committee, whether or not they're working with planning and zoning, or they're working separately for planning and zoning. Just trying to get an idea of what, what the expectation is for that committee.
So, thank you for the question. They, they would, first of all, not be members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and zoning would adjourn into study session, and these folks would join the conversation with planning and zoning members to, again, decide on what options are available for these certain topics, to really have that technical background and, and help steer that process in the, in the technical sense. Because when you start making and reordering potentially, you know, the code sections, it, it gets, it's going to get very confusing. So we're trying to get, you know, as many people with technical background on the steering committee, but we also don't want to miss anybody from the community that is also very interested in, in the process. And they would, they would have a role of potentially interviewing the consulting firms that we recommend to city council for the actual rewrite itself. And they would have, you know, depending on how we want to structure it, they can, can make recommendations on what they feel is the best language. Of course, Planning and Zoning Commission is going to make a recommendation to you all in the public hearing process. But they can help steer what recommendations are coming forward in this vast amount of, of information that we're going to be covering through this process.
So just a clarification, Mr. Burkholder. So you were saying that this steering committee may be involved with the concert, the consulting interviews in June?
That's what we're thinking, yes, right now.
And so not planning and zoning, you would, you would have this as part of the subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a very tight timeframe if that was to happen, then in terms of getting this all?
Right.
Set up. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burkholder.
Yep.
Councilmember Ward.
Thank you. So I, I want to clarify something that was said earlier in response to Member Russell's question. I still have trouble delineating what portion of this is considered zoning and what portion isn't. But Charter 58 says that council can't make any zoning ordinance or modification or amendment to zoning regulations without it going to PNC first. And that sounded different than what I, we heard from the city attorney. So I want to make sure that we're, everybody's on the same page relative to that.
If I may, what you're looking at tonight is, is not any recommendation. It is just a document that we're using as a blueprint moving forward to the rewrite. When it comes to actual changes to the Unified Development Code, that will have to go through a public hearing process with planning and zoning, and then on to you, the city council.
Okay. So that was the portion of the conversation that I perhaps didn't grasp initially. What we're doing tonight would not be subject to PNC, but if we were to make actual changes to the code, we would have to have a hearing at PNC first before that could occur.
Yes, that's correct.
Anything else? What's that? Yeah. Did that clarify the long run? What, how, how does everybody feel about this? Is it an okay process? Do you want to see it move forward like this? Mayor Protim Sierra, kick us off.
Um, I am happy with the process. I'm a little concerned about just the timing with the steering committee, to be honest. I do feel there is a need for this. So, and Mayor, I know that we discussed this last week during the mayor managers meeting. I think it's just a tight timeframe to get, well, yeah, to start the recruitment, to have the interviews, and to have them seated all within basically a six, seven, eight-week timeframe so that they could be made available for the June timeframe. And I guess the, the aspect now that I'm kind of talking out loud and thinking this through is, well, I, I guess it doesn't say when in June that we're going to have the interview. So it could be towards the back end of June. I just, if they're going to have a first meeting, and then are they, are they going to have a first meeting first? And then are they going to sit in as part of the interviews? It's all things that I'm just thinking in my head. So that's the only aspect of this that concerns me. Other than this, I really do like this. I'm, I'm ready to see it move forward. And obviously, Title 16 is a big discussion point that we have and have had for, at least since I've been on council. So I'm definitely looking forward to having this move forward.
Yeah, and, and the, the conversation that Mayor Protim is referring to is, we're also worried we have to do boards and commissions interviews as well. So there's, and then there's the, yeah, there's just a number of extra things going on in addition to hiring a city attorney. So, Councilmember Russell, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and actually, that was my question. And I guess my concern is, and the timeframe with the interviews, more so, what's going on with the city attorney search? I mean, we could actually be done with the interviews and all of that, but that could be a problem also, right, in the timeframe?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it's all a lot of work for the next three months for all of us, is what it is. And I'm, I'm very cognizant of that. It just feels like we just, you know, it bothers me when people think we haven't been working because we've been on Zoom, because I feel like I'm working all of the time, and you all are coming to extra things, and we're making meetings longer. So I just, I, I guess I, my question is, can the timeline be, be loosened up by at least a month?
Absolutely, it could. There's no hard deadlines here.
Okay.
This is just our suggested proposal. Although I would, I would like to get the RFP posted tomorrow, but we can certainly extend the back end of this.
Yeah, I appreciate your, your trying to get this done and in a timely manner and get things moving. And especially summer is a great time to be convening people. You can do some more kinds of things. But I just don't know how we're going to do all this. We have a couple of extra meetings. Councilmember Russell, continue.
With that in mind, I mean, if, if there is flexibility, I mean, if we started, I think that the things already on the table should be more of a priority, like, number one, the city attorney, and then boards and commissions. So if we could work around that, if it starts to interfere with the timeframe.
Yeah, well, the city attorney is all set. We already have, you have the April 12th and 13th. Hopefully, you've all put that on your calendar. And then I think we have dates for the interviewing of boards and commissions. That's on the schedule, too. This would be adding, adding one more set of, of interviews in, and also asking citizens to do something. So I, I think that's where it could get muddy, is asking for people to be in boards and commissions. And then we also have an extra group here that we want to make sure we fill well with people. So coordinating all that is probably more of a, of a challenge than, and then in addition, it's a lot of extra time for us.
Right. Thank you for that.
Yeah, others. Ready to go forward with this? Yeah, I, I like what I see here, too. I think it's really well laid out. And I'm, my only concern really is just the timing and making sure that it's really clear how we add people in for this important work from the community. So any, any naysayers here? You want to, anything hold back? Or Councilmember Questa, you're, I just have to laugh. Your head is just coming out of your background. I love the Zoom backgrounds.
I wore a plaid shirt this evening, and I won't do that again. I think that it's, there's something with the color of the grass that I.
It's wonderful.
I don't know. It, it's getting glitchy. But, but I fully support moving forward. Thank you.
Great. Director Power, did you want to add anything?
Well, just very quickly, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to follow up and make sure that we understand. We do plan to issue the RFP tomorrow based on your direction tonight. That'll actually give us some extra time to engage with the consultant community, and we will work with the city manager to make sure that we're not overburdening you with the, the work process that you've outlined tonight. So we'll, we'll adapt to that as we go. And we appreciate your direction this evening.
Okay, great. Councilmember Ward.
I support moving forward as well. There's been a lot of work done on this to date. I think it's been good work, and I think we should keep moving. It's going to be a long haul ahead, but I, no reason to stop now.
Yeah. Good. It looks like we're all in support of it, moving forward, getting your RFP out. Let's just work on the dates a bit so we can pace ourselves. And it might be that we just slow down some other things in order to let this go forward, too. So it's just, let's be aware, and we'll, we're trying, Mayor Protim and I are trying to keep the meetings back to where they were 8:30 or 9:00. So that's great.
That sounds great. I, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Find the screen here again. Next is our discussion regarding, this is Agenda Item 11, a discussion regarding the potential sale of two city properties. And our interim city attorney, Alex Doratek, and director of Public Works, Maria DeAndrea, are here to present and discuss with council whether or not we wish to pursue the potential sale of the two said properties and the steps in the process. So thank you for being here tonight to explain this to us. Are they, yeah, there we are.
I don't see Maria DeAndrea.
Yeah, I wonder if she thought we'd be going later because we have caught up some time here.
We're also missing Member Anderson.
Oh, thank you for noting that. Councilmember Wink, do you have something to shed some light on this? Or are you wanting to speak to the issue? Okay. Can we get in touch with Maria and see if we can get her in here?
So I think there's a chance she's delayed with single hell or trash, which was set to wrap up a little bit later than usual tonight. So I don't know if that helped.
That's right. And then Member Anderson's back on. Good. Member Anderson, did you just get booted off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're waiting for Director DeAndre. She's part of this presentation. She's probably in the trash-falling meeting. Just goes to show you how much we're double booking ourselves here.
And I have to confess, it's primarily her presentation, so I'm certainly not in a position to step up.
Oh, here she is.
Here she comes.
Director DeAndre, we are just moving along here tonight, and we probably surprised you with the timing. So, but we're ready. If you are, if you need a minute to take a break, we certainly can.
That's right. And then.
Are you able to jump in?
Yeah, I apologize. I was.
Thank you.
We're waiting for Director DeAndre. She's.
I think someone else has their.
To show you how much we're double booking ourselves.
Oh, it's, you're listening to the meeting, and that was me coming back to me.
Oh, here she is. Director DeAndre, we are just moving along here tonight.
Oh, my God, it is so bizarre to hear it.
So I guess that answers the question of how much of a delay we have.
Yeah, when my family is watching it upstairs, I'll often go up and take a break and see myself. So is it over? Yeah. Okay, Director DeAndre, we're ready.
Okay.
And I don't know, Member Wink, are you wanting to ask a question before she even gets started? Are you just getting in queue here? Okay. She wants to be the first one up. So go ahead.
So I'd like to introduce Mike Della Forno, who is with the South Metro Fire District. He's here to answer any questions tonight, if you do have any, just for the fire training facility. So we'll walk through both of these properties, and then at the end, we can discuss first the Tae-Hoon Fire Station, and then secondly, the Fire Training Center. So the photo on your screen is an elevation where the, you can see here the Tae-Hoon Fire Station site. This is a recent photo from 2019 from Google Earth, looking above. You can just see over time the increased activity on the site after the lease. So this is a photo when it was a fire station, just showing that back parking lot, quite a bit of green space. And then over time, this was in 2018, by then, we had leased the site, and then in its current state right now. So I had checked with code enforcement, you know, just to make sure that this was, there were no issues. But you can see the site is heavily used. So we'd really have three options. Again, the current less C or tenant has requested that they be given the option of purchasing the property that was included in the original lease as a consideration, and that would be at the current appraised value. So our options really is, we could take advantage of that, this request from American Striping to sell the property for the current appraised value per that right of first refusal. Or if they chose not to do that, we could at any time put the property on the open market. Again, if the tenant did not waive their rights of first refusal, or finally just continue to retain ownership of the property. So I'll pause there for any questions before we move on to the fire training facility.
Councilmember Wink, do you have questions about this one?
No, I, no, I don't have questions about it. Thank you, Mayor.
No, I'll wait. No, I don't have questions about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Questa.
I do. Do we have a current appraised value on the property?
No, the last time we did it was in 2015. So we would recommend upgrade, updating that.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna put Member Questa's hand down, but Member Wink, I think you want yours up, huh? All right, go ahead. I think that was the only question.
And then the Fire Training Centers. So this is located, just if you haven't been out there, this is Waste Management Facility on the west side of the South Platte. So we're on the east side here. This area is just off of Santa Fe. And then you kind of wind your way back in here on Shenango Avenue to get into this area, this right adjacent to a trail. And this area of town. So this has been a joint facility that was originally developed between Littleton and Englewood and has changed ownerships over time. South Metro does currently own the majority of the property and is actively working to acquire the remaining interest in it, which is why they reached out to us regarding this property. So again, the representative from South Metro is here tonight if there are any specific questions. But once again, you can see here, South Metro currently owns 50%. They are actively working with West Metro to acquire their percentage. And then they've come to us to talk about that 25% of our current ownership. So again, we have a couple of options. So we could retain our interest in the property. And basically, the next steps involved with that is we would want to set forth an agreement or an amendment to the current agreement that better details the parties' responsibilities in regards to operation and use of that site. And we would be required to sign a restricted use agreement with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and South Metro is the, basically the two owners, the two remaining owners, talking about that restricted use is related to the hazardous materials on the site and that we wouldn't do anything to disturb those or make those spread in any way. The second option would be is to sell the property for the amount offered by South Metro. They were basing that, I believe, on a 2018 appraisal that had been completed. And just a note about that is that we would still be responsible as the former owner for any mitigation of the hazardous substances that were released during that period where we did own it. So just selling it doesn't mean that we release that liability in any way. And then finally, we would, we could obtain a current appraisal and counteroffer basically to South Metro based on a more up-to-date appraisal price, knowing that that's the current value within the, within the marketplace. So again, if we want to take these one at a time, we could start with the Tahoma Fire Station property. And we'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for discussion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director DeAndre. Let's start with the Tahoma Fire Station. So first up is Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Director DeAndre. So, and I do think it's better to speak about them separately. Regarding the Tahoma Fire Station, I think some of the main arguments that we're gonna think through and discuss are around one, whether or not it's a historic building that we want to retain for the city. And then secondly, the cost or benefit of selling it now. And I just want to speak a bit to both of those. So because I've heard these arguments previously. So in terms of it being a historic structure, Englewood's municipal code requirements around designation of structures and districts as historic, it's 16.6.11 interim attorney Doratek, I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm off in that citation of the code, states that in order for a structure to be eligible for designation, it needs to be at least 50 years old. And as we can see from tonight's council memo notes, the Tahoma Fire Station was built in 1976. So it's actually 45 years old. In terms of being deemed historic, it doesn't meet that minimum requirement for designation. And then with regard to the additional criteria in EMC 16.6.11, I just want to bring up the point that it would be a stretch for the building to meet any of the other criteria. One, this sole fire station doesn't adequately satisfy the criteria listed there. So I don't see it fitting in that category of being a historic property. And then to the thoughts around the cost benefit of analysis of selling now versus, you know, of the three options we have before us. So according to SIRS, right, we, the 2015 value was 689. So it's not 2015 now. But let's just take that amount as an example, right? Not an insignificant sum of money for which the city could obviously find many valuable uses. If with that is the value, right, the example value, it would take the city of Englewood almost 14 years to capture that back if we didn't sell and just kept moving forward with ongoing rent payments. So rent payments, maybe 14 years to recover that amount versus a lump sum or sale today that would give us around that, maybe more. And that's based on the lease amount that American Striping is paying for years six to 10, years 11 to 15, and year six to 20. There are three different amounts, but I'm just taking an average and saying it's 50,000. And then the last thing I want to say just right now, before I turn the floor over to someone else, is that the last thing I want to do as a member of this council is to perpetuate policymaking that disenfranchises minorities within the city of Englewood. I think here in this offer to purchase the former Tahoma Fire Station, we have a minority female business owner who's brought pretty significant value to that spot, to that entire area, that zone of our city. It's a little arm. With, and I think that the tenure of her business in Englewood is an asset that we should invest in. And so I would be in favor of selling the Tahoma Fire Station to American Striping. Thanks, Mayor.
Mayor Proton, Sierra is next.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll stick to the Tahoma Fire Station as a, as a question. I did have a question on the other one, but so I guess a question that I have regarding Tahoma, is there any good reason why the city should sell the property?
Are you posing that to?
I think that would be for Director, yeah, Director DeAndre.
And maybe the, our city manager as well.
Right.
Certainly, I can attend, you know, it was not our intent to sell it at this time. I think, again, it was, we're bringing this item forward since there was a request. But absent that, I don't think that staff would have brought this forward.
Okay. I appreciate that, Director.
Anything further?
No, not, not, not on Tahoma specifically.
Okay. And then Councilmember Anderson's next.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I'm not sure who, who's the best person to direct this question at. But my question is, do we, is this something, do we have a number of properties that we own and lease out? Is this, is this, I don't, I mean, I only know of this one and I only know it because it came, came up. But is this something the city, the city does in other areas? And what's the, what's the benefit of owning these properties and leasing them out to the city?
This is the only one I'm aware of where we have a lease. We do have a lease, one, one of the properties within the Eiff area. We, where, which we sublease to the Guild. If you're familiar with that business, it's kind of a localized work share space. Other than that, none of our city buildings are subleased to anybody else that I'm aware of.
Okay. Um, that's, that's all for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, historically, I believe, part of the reason previous councils have not sold this building is because it is one of our fire stations. And at the beginning, I think there were, and I don't know if this would ever be a possibility to take the fire department back from Denver. I'm not saying that it's a possibility, but if we get rid of this building, it probably definitely wouldn't be a possibility because then we would have to purchase land. There is income coming in from it. And I mean, we had three fire stations strategically located. The Tahoma Station was in the northwest area, the Akoma Station more in the south, and then Jefferson Station in the center. So I believe that that is, and Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But that's what I'm kind of thinking.
No, I think you're right. We did, we did say that when we did that back then and said we would keep it until everything was clear that we, you know, there was no need to sell it at that point. There was just not any need. So I'm gonna let City Manager Lewis speak up now. I think you probably have some response to some of the things being said.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to affirm Councilmember Russell's memory about the, the reason for, for keeping that. However, I have learned that today's fire trucks, no matter if we own them or Denver Fire, that building would have to be most likely demolished. So it's exactly true that the property itself, you know, we would, we'd have to buy other property if we went back to, for instance, our own fire department, or if we went with one of the other fire departments in the, in the region. And we would have to probably buy property. But I do want to point out that the building as it stands now is functionally obsolete as a fire station by current day standards.
Thank you. That's helpful. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for saying that, City Manager Lewis. Also, I believe in our conversation in 2018, when we discussed it at that time, not only were we discussing, I believe, that night, the unfortunate passing of Rachel Haber in, Ms. Haber in the, in our flood. The night we were discussing this last, we were also a little bit newer in our new engagement with South Metro Fire. And so I'm glad we have a representative tonight to maybe cross validate some of what I might think here. It seemed that at the time, we weren't really sure if we still needed the building. Well, now we know from City Manager, as it stands, it's, it's no longer usable as a fire station. But, but further to, I think, the thoughts we might have around, should we return to a place where Englewood does house its own fire department? Now that three years have passed and the exact, the documentation that exists states that the merger has been successful and that Englewood shouldn't be reestablishing its fire department. Can we, can we confirm that? I don't remember the gentleman's name that's here from.
Mayor, if I could, I don't know that we would want Chief Della Forno to speak to that per se.
Okay.
But you are correct, Councilmember Wink. Certainly, we have a successful relationship with Denver Fire. I guess my concern that I shared with Councilmember Russ, that I did not, that I had the same opinion as Councilmember Russell on, was could we go back to either our own state fire department, which I think is highly unlikely. But could we also, would we need this station if we were going to change the contract and go with another department? I think the answer is yes, we would need that. The reason why Denver worked and saved us so much money is because they had a station so near to this one that they didn't need our station. The other two districts that could potentially serve us do not have that, that proximity for stations. And so we, we would need a property at least to build a new fire station. And so this would be such property. However, the building itself again is obsolete for our purposes.
All right. Thank you. Member Questa, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. If the city sells an asset such as this, where do those funds go? What, what account do they go into?
I believe those would go into the Long Term Asset Reserve Fund or Later Fund.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor Proton, Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think in terms of just where my, my stance is on the Tahoma Fire Station, I still would like to keep the property. And I appreciate Member Wink bringing up the reasons for why we should sell. To me, it's like, I just don't think that there's an immediate need for us to sell. If there was, if there was like a financial hardship or anything along those lines, I, I would, I would definitely see a reason to sell this. The other aspect of this, and I haven't really brought it up with City Manager Lewis, but you know, during the discussions that we've had over affordable housing and potentially, you know, solving some of the homeless issues. I'm not saying that this is some of the thing or something that we would use it for, but you know, one of the questions I've always asked City Manager Lewis was, do we even have any property that the city would, could potentially use for that type of thing? And the answer was always, not really. But this is actually like one property. I'm not saying we would ever use it for that purpose. But I, I would like to keep the property as just, you know, just for flexibility down the road. I'm not sure where we go from it, but at least from this point of view, or at least from this day and time, I, I don't see a, a true need for us to sell the property. So for, for me tonight, I would prefer to just hold on to the Tahoma Fire Station.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm thinking in a similar way as Mayor Proton. I guess the question, the question that occurs to me is a broader, a broader question considering kind of in terms of fiduciary duty to the city, want to make sure this is, this, this asset, if, if this is going to be potentially useful in the future. Or, or just more of a strategy question in terms of property ownership. Is there, is there other properties that would be more beneficial to, to own than this property? I could see an argument being made to sell this if we had other uses for the fund. It could go in the, in the later fund. And then we could, you know, if we had other immediate uses for that, I wouldn't want to sell this property without having a, a more clear purpose for doing it. Other than, you know, other than just somebody came and, and asked that, asked to buy it. And I, you know, I wish the best for American Striping and everything, but I want to make sure that we are, the decision we make benefits the city. If there's a potential use down the road, if we were to switch fire departments or something like that, then already I'm seeing a reason to retain this. The reason to sell it, I would want to see something like, well, we would like to sell it in order to buy this other asset that would be more useful for the city. So that would be where I would want to see this conversation go. If we were serious about selling it and what we would do with the funds. And you know, I don't want to just get the, the funds just put into a fund that we're gonna forget about. But especially thinking that this is, this is property ownership, there could be potential uses for other properties that could be more immediately useful for the benefit of the citizenry in Englewood. So that's where I would like to, to see if we had some ideas around that. I'd be happy to discuss more seriously selling it. Otherwise, I'm, I'm not in favor of it. There's no direct benefit to the city at this time.
Thank you. I'll weigh in too. The last time we had this conversation when we were made an offer, I said, I would not want to sell it until we had a clear and compelling reason for the land use and that it fit the area. Like what is the perfect, highest, best use of that land within the context of the larger neighborhood and district? And I don't think that work has been done. I appreciate that we have a great, you know, interest in that property by the tenant and that they want to stay and thrive, which I want to support in every way we can. But I don't think we should be selling land based on just an offer and that instead we need to have a clear plan and understand what our long range interests are in that property. And maybe, maybe that's something that needs to be done over the summer and articulate a position so that it, so that it's clear. And, and then we don't have to have this again and again if we keep getting offers. So I would not be in favor of selling it right out. Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. I like where Member Anderson was going in terms of a larger discussion. I too am unsure of all the properties that Englewood owns. I was aware of this one, the MFTC property, I was not. So maybe it's worth us having a study session on just here, the property assets we hold. I actually don't think appraisals hurts to know, like what, what are our total asset values and property? What, you know, best, highest use? What are potential uses we have for those? So I think a larger conversation on what exactly we own. And you know, maybe it's three or four. And you, City Manager Lewis, if you know offhand that isn't much, then, then maybe there's not much of a conversation to be had. But I, I, I'm not sure that we've ever had a comprehensive talk on what exactly are the city-owned properties and what are our purposes, what are our plans there? And regardless of about shakes out, you know, it'd certainly be amenable to an appraisal on the property currently occupied by American Striping. I do appreciate them, appreciate them operating the city, being tenants. And I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Ward. All right. Councilmember Ward.
So I'm not sure if I'm comfortable sort of teasing them with an appraisal. Because I'm pretty uncomfortable selling. So if we don't have an intent to sell, I don't know why we would appraise the property. So that's where I'm on that. Some reasons why I'm not comfortable selling. Part of that was addressed by Member Wink, the potential for future historic value, for sure. I'll just concede that that's been shot down. But there is an income stream here and the income stream lasts longer than what we would get right now from selling potentially. And and I'm comfortable with the income stream, especially given the fact that the tenant is required to do maintenance on the property. So there's not much in the way of city liability attached to this property. It's just an asset with an income stream right now. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in? We at least have a consensus not to sell, but with some ideas of how to mold this into a larger perspective. Are you all, I guess we're tonight, we were only asked about whether we wanted to sell it or not. Councilmember Wink.
Good question. To Member Questa's and Member Anderson's request for sort of a an inventory on properties, I almost believe that we asked that question in 2018. And I I feel as if I remember something being produced by this and provided to council. Do you not remember that? Maybe Member Russell, Mayor Wilson?
I do, and it's that this is the only property other than the other one.
I feel as if it was done for the whole city. Just I remember like a whole inventory. I feel as if that request was already fulfilled, basically is what I'm saying. If no one remembers it or we don't know where it is, then I guess it doesn't matter. We can do the work again. That's all. Thank you.
All right. So is there, I guess I'm going to ask us to circle back through. Do you want to leave it as as no, we we're not going to sell it right now? But do you want to take any further action? Or do you want to do you want staff to come back with us to us with something or you don't want to deal with that tonight? Councilmember Questa.
If there is an existing report inventory of city council properties, or excuse me, city properties, that can be just resent out, that would be helpful. I'd like to take a look and then maybe that might spark a larger conversation. I and I feel like we weighed in on T-Hone Fire and maybe the other members were speaking of both properties. I'm not sure if we spoke so specifically to MFTC. But and and I beg your pardon on that if that's not the case, Mayor.
No, you're right. We didn't talk about MFTC. I I I probably, maybe I'm the only one that's toured that. Member Russell, were you on when we did a tour?
I was not.
So when we get to that property, I'll share some of my views of that property. But Member Quest, I think you're you're, I think it's great. If we can get some of this info out again, that would be really good. Member Ward.
Sorry, just one more thing on the subject of T-Hone. I'm in agreement with Member Anderson. If we had another piece of property that we wanted to acquire that would cost roughly what the T-Hone Fire Station would generate in selling, I would be more inclined to advocate selling.
Thank you. All right. So is that enough direction for you all? I guess there's a council request out of it really that is asking for a little bit more information about all the all the properties that we owned and might be leasing, which might be a very quick find.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. We did provide a list of properties that the city maintained maybe a year and a half or so ago. So we'll dust that off and get that back out to you. We'll double check on any other leased leased property that the city has. Thank you.
And and maybe Mayor Protem and I will put a topic on the in the parking lot for us to study a topic just because if this is going to come up again, might as well have it all in one place and have had some conversation. And so you don't have to, you know, redo this in another eight, nine months without some direction that you've had before. All right. So on to the MFTC property. I did do a tour there. This was before, of course, we went to Denver. We were trying to get a full sense of all the assets that we had in the city around fire. And my major concern with this property was, of course, it was lying dormant at the time. It wasn't being used at all for quite a while. But it's the environmental piece of it. It 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 just seemed like there was not safeguards from things flowing out. Now, now that South Metro is involved, my hunch is that there's an act of, I would hope, care for that because it's right next to the to the river. So I guess that's my big question tonight. I don't know if anybody can answer that and then I'll go on to Mayor Protem.
Yeah, maybe Mr. Delafano can respond to that. He might have more history than any any of us, really.
Hi, Mayor and Members of Council. This is Mike Delafano, one of the Assistant Chiefs at South Metro. Thanks for having me. Happy to try to answer any questions. I know we've been using the Training Center full time for just a short while. We do take precautions to avoid any runoff into the Platte River. We no longer burn any Class A or wood materials in the burn building. So we do gas fires in those big cargo boxes that you may have noticed. Actually, I don't even know if they were there at the time. So a lot of that contamination potential is gone. And now in particular, what we're dealing with is the foam contamination. So this is a foam that you've probably heard in the news over the past couple of years. It was first discovered at our military bases and realizing that when it gets into the groundwater, it can cause issues over time. And so I think two years ago, the state put kind of a moratorium on its use. Instead, it can only be used for emergency, actual firefighting use. No more training until we figure out what's going to go on. And then I believe starting next year or in 2023, we're no longer allowed to use it for firefighting use either. So there is foam contamination at the Training Center. The only place that South Metro actually has it still in use, we've taken off of all of our engines except for the ones at our airport, in Centennial Airport. So that's something we just don't have an alternative for at this point. So we keep it stored inside the engines and will only use it in the event of a plane crash. So the the state is starting to work out some rules and regulations around that. Right now, just the storage and what it means to have it on your premise and spill control and all that good stuff. But it's still essentially an unregulated substance, which leads to our voluntary cleanup program, which leads to use restrictions on the site and all that good stuff that was mentioned in your packet.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sierra, and welcome tonight. Mayor Protem Sierra, you're next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I guess just my question is, so since we're contracting now through Denver Fire, we're not using this at all, the MFTC. So is there a potential that we may use it in the future? And I guess that would be for Director DeAndrea or City Manager Lewis possibly?
Mayor, I can address that question. We did reach out to Denver Fire to see if we would need have any need for the use of that facility. They said that they could use it between 60 and 75 days per year. So Chief Fulton, the Denver Fire Chief did, and I did speak about this. And he did ask that if we do sell it, that they would like to reserve some number of days in that range for the use of the facility by Denver Fire. We have not discussed that yet as that came later with Chief Delafano. And we're glad to do that, but we really would need direction from you all, whether or not to even enter in those types of discussions.
And City Manager Lewis, if you don't mind me asking just a follow up question, I guess similar to the question for the previous property. But is there any good reason for the city looking to sell this property? Or I share the property, I guess, as you say, in this case.
I think that's a great question. I don't see a compelling reason to maintain ownership of the property. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I don't I don't see a need to maintain ownership.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis.
Other questions? I think I might come back and ask that one again. Councilmember Anderson.
Is there any revenue associated with this property?
No, there is not.
Okay. Yeah, that to me, that puts this this property on a little different footing. I'm not, you know, I think this is a different, still a difficult question. But since it's not not a revenue producing property, I I'm I'm not sure what the purpose of retaining the ownership is. But I'd love to hear what other council members' thoughts are.
Councilmember Ward.
I'm much more comfortable selling this property. To me, this property is hanging a little bit like an albatross around the city's neck. So I I think, you know, we have 25% ownership. But we don't have control of the property because we only have 25% ownership. So getting rid of it doesn't bother me at all.
Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. I I think this property presents perhaps another policy discussion that this council ought to have at some point in time. Because I think maybe previous councils, which was probably far back before any of us. The the only reason we're at this point is because it was jointly owned with Littleton. Is that correct? I believe that's correct.
Could you repeat the question, Councilmember Russell?
Originally, was this property owned jointly owned with Littleton? Or was it always ours?
No, it was a joint ownership.
Yes.
Okay.
And so Once Littleton went to South Metro, it was acquired by South Metro. I think is how it happened, right?
Right.
And and I it I'm not, there's no compelling reason for us to keep it. But it could be a strategic move for South Metro Fire too, to own property in the city of Englewood. So I'm, all I'm saying is that I, there's no compelling reason why we should keep this. But I think it's something that this council ought to learn from is that when we jointly own with Littleton or one of the neighboring areas that that perhaps we should put in the contract, we have first right of refusal. So it doesn't, so it's not acquired by somebody else. Because in the long run, this may come back to bite us. So but that I'm okay with selling it.
Councilmember Questa.
I appreciate the thoughts there from Member Russell on possibly how we structure future contracts if we were to enter them on property purchases. And I am supportive of selling as well.
All right. Others? Grab enough to. Let's see, I have, I didn't write all of us out here. Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Actually, I was going to just say that I I'm still not in favor of selling the property just because I don't feel that there's a true need to sell the property. I I do like the the statement that Member Russell stated in terms of first first review refusal. But again, I think just terms of ownership, I I just don't, I'm just not in favor of selling one. There's really no compelling reason for us to sell. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Ward.
So unlike the T-Hone station that we talked about earlier, there is some maintenance and and other liability associated with this property. So while we're not generating any revenue from it, it it does have the potential to cost us money in the future. And that that would be an argument for selling in my opinion.
I can ask a question in between here if I can. What are the current costs? I think I'm, I've lost my document for the maintenance yearly. What are we putting into it at this point?
Mayor, right now, we're putting nothing in that into the property. However, we have been informed by the current owner that we that all owners will need to start paying a maintenance fee on that. So perhaps Chief Delafano could speak to that.
We, yeah, do we know how much it'll be?
Hi, yes. And that was the traditional setup was that all the partners contributed to the annual maintenance cost. Now, that hasn't been going on since 2015. It was actually the city of Littleton that was in our position right now. Back then, offering West Metro and South Metro a buyout so that they could work towards being the sole owner. And then, as you mentioned, we've had a a large merger since then. So we're finding that property useful for our our training needs. In this year's budget, we have approximately $85,000 in operating costs along with $65,000 in capital costs budgeted. We're in the process of installing a fence around the property right now as we're having some issues with the homeless population coming in at night and causing damage to the facility. We've also identified about a million dollars in potential capital over the next five years. It's an old facility, not only the classroom space, but just the training grounds. There are new standards for cancer prevention, being able to take showers, have proper male and female facilities, all of that in order to truly support a large training operation. And most of that is non-existent at the site. So it's going to need some investment.
So I guess the question is, what would the fee be then to Englewood that you're anticipating? And it sounds like you're going to do a major development there to really flush this Training Center out a lot further.
Yeah, we haven't had any discussions on it, but the old model would be the 25% of the cost.
25% of the cost of anything that you do on the property or?
Right.
So if you develop it with all this Training Center and everything, then you're going to charge us 25% of that.
Well, again, that's the old model. And then, of course, that's between all parties that we're actually using it as a training facility. And just as a side note, because it was asked earlier, we have drafted an agreement that allows Denver to use the facility free of charge as long as they coordinate with our Training Bureau. So I think that need is taken care of. And so for Englewood to pay into the cost of the Training Center, it it would really be for Denver Fire Department who are already allowing to use.
And are you allowing them at 60 to 70 days a year?
There were, there was no cap set in that agreement. We haven't signed the agreement, but and they hadn't mentioned any sort of cap. It was just an assurance that they would still be able to use it.
Thank you. Sorry, Member Anderson, you're next.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, having having heard the heard the different arguments, I think I'm in in favor of selling this. The the distinction I see between this and the T-Hone property is that one produces revenue. This one has the potential to cost us a lot of money. So I don't see any advantage to owning it. So I would I would support selling it.
So in terms of building consensus, I have Member Russell saying yes, Member Anderson saying yes, Member Ward saying yes, and Member Questa saying yes, all to sell it. Is that right? So I think you have enough to go forward with that. I'm a little hesitant, I must say, still. But that's because I've been burnt before. It doesn't matter whether it's an historic building or anything. I just want to make sure that we're using, we're we're thinking through all of it. This one has less possibility to develop any further. And I guess if South Metro takes it, the and we become South Metro at some point in our lives, it will just be all the more ironic that we're we're then using a site that's once ours. But are anybody else have more to say here? Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. I just have a question. Is the property going to be appraised and we're going to get 25% of the appraisal? Or there's no negotiations going on yet?
Oh, so that's a good next step question. If we if if this goes forward, what happens next? And how do we get the highest and best amount of money for this? Do we have an answer to that from someone?
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we, there is the possibility for the executive session to discuss how to go about selling it, negotiations about that, if that's something council would want. I do, there is, I think what Director DeAndrea is going to say is that there is a an offer on the table that could be taken. Or council could direct to either negotiate. Or council could direct to either negotiate or go go with a outside appraisal and negotiate. But that's something that could be discussed in executive session if council wants to that. However, there's no absolute reason that it has to be. Council could go forward right now. It's council's discretion.
Okay. What's your wish? What are your wishes here? And Councilmember Wink, I didn't mean to leave you out here at all. You have a way then if you want to, you can, but looks like it's going in the direction it is. Folks, you want an executive session to sort of hammer out some more?
Not tonight.
Not tonight. No, we have to notice it for at least 24 hours. So but do you all want to let the staff take care of that and move it forward? Or do you want to have an executive session? Member Russell.
I think we should have an executive session, but I agree with Councilmember Wink, not tonight.
No, we won't be doing it tonight. Violate charter. Member or Mayor Protem's here.
Same. I think we need to have an executive session.
All right. Member or City Manager Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that it would be okay with you for us to meet with South Metro to discuss potential terms. I think we'd be more informed when we came into the executive session. Is that okay?
That seems wise.
Okay.
I I that's just me. Anybody against anybody have want to speak against that? I don't want to cut anybody off. No. Okay, so it sounds like, yeah, spend some time talking it through, and then let's bring it back in an executive session to make some just to inform us in a way we can decide whether there needs to be more negotiation or not. All right. Wonderful. Does that give you what you need tonight? Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Attorney Dorcek. Okay, great. Moving ahead here, we have a COVID-19 update.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of council. I'll be very brief this evening. In terms of the case numbers, I do need to indicate that for whatever reason, in the last few days, the timeliness of Tri County posting their updates has slowed a bit. So the change in the case numbers that I'm giving you this evening are from the time period from Wednesday last week to Saturday, the 20th. So from between the 17th and the 20th, we didn't have updated numbers for the last two days. In terms of cases in Arapahoe County, they've increased by 415 to a total of 51,613 since this time last year. Inglewood's cases increased by 21 in that period to 2,249. The three day average hospitalization rate inched up from 18 to 24 persons on average. And the total deaths increased by two in the county to 711. And the the deaths in Inglewood did not change at 62. The vaccine vaccination rate is the one piece of good news in this is obviously trending upward. It increased from 23.8% to 26.3%. And we obviously expect that percentage to continually increase. I know that you heard from Melissa Sager earlier in the in the meeting in terms of some of the discussion relative to the new COVID dial that is coming out. So presuming that the state Health Department issues that new dial and the new capacity chart on Wednesday, we will make sure to include that in our Friday update so that you have that latest information from the state. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Power. Any questions for him? If not, we'll move on to agenda item 13, which is reports from boards and commission liaison. If you don't have a need to report tonight, we can shorten the meeting, but I don't want to cut it off. Either a lot of us last week said we'd wait till this week. So go ahead. Who would like to report? Councilmember Wink, thank you. But you did put your hand up, too, right? Talk about Water and Sewer Board, I hope.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I just for the record, I want to say that I was going to speak to what Director Van Ry. I guess there was one piece I didn't cover, but most of it Director Van Ry ended up telling you tonight. I was sort of prepping council for what was to come. So I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Any others? I will just do a quick update on the Metro Mayors joined together with Built for Zero and Metro Denver Housing Initiative and last week had a full half day. I mean, a half day that you were all invited to. I don't know if any of you were listening in. Does any any of you listening in? It was a panel presentation. It was really, really well done. It is audio or it is videoed, recorded, so we can get it out to you if you'd like to watch it. It was an excellent presentation on regional understanding of homelessness and possible strategies together, and it concluded with a call to have a city or metrowide regional plan and different mayors are signing on to encourage that we do that. I did do that. And I've said, we already are. We already are moving forward on this, and I encourage everyone else to continue to do the same. So one of the issues that was central to it was working on veteran homelessness, which we have very little of in the city of Inglewood, but it is one of the indicators for making a difference. If you can use their metrics and get one population really to a functional zero, you can move on to others. For us, we'll be working on and have been working on chronic and and families, but their metrics are going to work well with our chronic population. So I think Alyssa and the the work that we're doing there is going to be really helped by this, which is my second update, is that the Tri-Cities Policy Group on Homelessness, we the Executive Committee of the Little Steering Committee, we set the agendas for every month. We decided that we are going to wait another month, so we won't be meeting this next month because we're waiting for the the update on the action plan from again, Alyssa, who Alyssa, right? Is it? Do I have her name right? Anyway, yeah, I do. Okay, good. And hopefully, we'll have a great plan within the next month that we'll be bringing to each of the three councils. So just wanted to give you that update. Anybody else? Doesn't look like there's any hands up. So that means we can move on to the next item, which, gosh, I think I just lost it.
City attorney.
Yeah, city attorney, a discussion of of our finding staff or yeah, the ability to go ahead and hire a firm. And we have our city attorney, our interim city attorney Alex Dorcek is here along with Tim Dodd to actually give us a bit of an overview on the five different proposals we've gotten. And then they have a great. If you didn't see it, it came right as we were going in, a wonderful Excel sheet that summarizes some of the information here for us. So I'll let you all take care of to move forward on that.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So I'm going to give a really quick overview, as the mayor said, and then Alex, interim city attorney Dorcek and I, as well as Deputy City Attorney Dugan Comer here to answer your questions. So the city did put out for proposals for interim city attorney services. And as of today, which was the deadline at noon, we received five. There were four that were received by the deadline and ones that were thereafter. All five are from law firms that all have extensive experience working in municipal law. Many have represented cities and towns very close to Inglewood, and they all do have offices and do business in in the Denver area. Each submitted a detailed proposal, of which you have copies. They were sent to you again this afternoon. When we put out the proposal, we asked applicants to provide several pieces of information. So we asked for them to identify a lead attorney, as well as detail their experience, specifically their experience working in areas where the city attorney of Inglewood obviously deals quite a bit. So things like land use, public records laws, contracts, drafting ordinances, advising council, writing advice to staff. We also did note in the in the proposal that there are several meetings, including, of course, council meetings where representation is is needed by an attorney, by the interim city attorney. We also asked for information about other attorneys who may play a role in the contract. These are all firms. I think they're the smallest one is about four attorneys. So they all, again, specialize in municipal law, but even within obviously municipal law, there's different specialties. So we asked for them to identify, you know, who in their firm may work, for example, on land use or contracts, et cetera. We also asked for their experience in municipal law, particularly municipal law in Colorado. And again, knowledge of law as it relates to areas where the city attorney in Inglewood practices. Again, we did provide all this information to you in a spreadsheet. And so we're happy, again, Deputy City Attorney Comer, interim city attorney Dorcek, and I stand ready to answer your questions.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the Excel sheet and trying to figure out how to make sense of it. I'm not sure if anyone else is or not. And so do you have some recommendations that you can help us with here?
And if I may, Mayor, we did discuss this at quite length, my quite a bit of length myself, Deputy City Attorney Dugan Comer, Assistant City Manager Tim Dodd, and of course, City Manager Sean Lewis. The first thing I would really highlight for you all, if you look at that Excel sheet, I'm assuming you all have it in front of you. If not, I could try to share a screen. Can't promise I'll be successful in that. But I would really focus on.
Let's stop for a second. Does anybody need it shared? No, okay. Keep going.
So I would focus on the lead attorney portion of that spreadsheet. And the reason I say that is all of these firms do have a lot of attorneys working for them and doing different things. But really, you want to look at who's the person that's going to be in the meetings advising you? Who are you going to be dealing with? And as by means of guidance? And I can certainly give you a recommendation if that's what you'd like. And I think that is what you're asking for. Is that correct, Mayor Olson?
Well, I I am.
Then I'll I will start out just by.
I guess we've got other. Yeah, I'd like to hear your 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 perspective. And then we've got a number of hands that are up.
And so I'll just start off by saying that one of the first things we we did is look at those.
Go ahead, Mayor. Russell, you want me to you want us to stop and not hear his perspective?
Yes, I do want us to stop and not hear his perspective. I think we need to talk about this first. Thank you.
All right. And was there another hand up? Member Anderson, did you have yours up today? Excellent. Put it down. No. So.
But I don't. I don't need to say anything right now. I would like to hear. Well, now that I'm talking, I would like to hear 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 our interim city attorney's opinion. But I do, I would, I I think it might be good to talk for us to talk through the proposals first. I think that makes sense. But I'm not opposed to, you know, I don't I don't. I don't want to say no, I don't want to hear it. But I do think it makes sense to wait.
Anybody else want to hear it right now, or you want to wait? Member Ward.
I'm okay with waiting on the interim city attorney's recommendation. I will say one thing that I noted is the rate proposals differ. And generally speaking, I found myself more comfortable with the fixed rate monthly than with hourly.
All right. Well, okay, so in deference to at least a couple people that have spoken up, city attorney Dorcek will hold off on your opinion, but I do want to hear it. So let's talk about the process here, or at least what you like and don't like about some of these proposals. What do you really? How do you want to do this? Do you want to? The funding is, of course, one of them. One, one place we could start is, do you have any problems with any of those that submitted? Do you have any question about their abilities or about their backgrounds or anything like that? That's one thing we could put to rest if we think we have something there. Go ahead, Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I mean, I think they all seem seem qualified. Some of them do seem more, you know, have more experience than others. And then the one thing that jumped out at me is slightly problematic is the one that was where the fixed monthly rate is way lower than all of the others. They might be qualified, but I'm not sure what we're getting for for that rate. And so I would, I would probably opt out of that one for for that reason. But otherwise, you know, I have my, I kind of have my top from reading through the applicant or reading through the proposals. But I don't know if we're ready for for that or not. But that rate was concerning to me. And also, the the one with only hourly rates was also concerning the other ones I'd be willing to discuss.
Okay, so that's good to know. So so far, none of them you felt like didn't quite meet the requirements in terms of their quality of in their background. Let's let's just go down that road first, so we know if it eliminates anybody. Because I think it's going to come down to the finances. Councilmember Russell.
So when did the Excel? Is this? It's a spreadsheet. I don't have it.
That's that's what I said. We just got it as we were. I should have said, as we were coming into the Zoom meeting, we we received it. So it's in your email. That's why I asked if we needed to show it to everybody.
Remember, Russell, it's part of Mr. Dodd's email, but there's a lot of PDFs plus the Excel sheet at the end of that.
Oh, so the okay, the Excel sheet is at the bottom.
At the very bottom of it, yeah.
Okay, so.
You have it then?
I do have it, but it's kind of hard to look at it on my phone.
I imagine so. It's hard to even look at it on a computer screen.
I mean, I Has everyone had an opportunity to to look at all of this? All of this in depth since we got it so late in the day?
No.
And and so in all fairness, I would like, I mean, I don't know if we can do this. Schedule a special meeting tomorrow night after we have looked at it just to make a decision.
I don't think I can, but let's keep let's let's keep finding out what we can now. Okay? And then see where we are. Mayor Protem?
Actually, I had a question. So I was just trying to figure out how how much do we plan on utilizing the cities, the city attorneys? Like, I'm just wondering, you know, are we expecting? You know, are we expecting Dugan to handle aspects of this? I'm guessing like in terms of like board and commission questions or? I'm just trying to get an idea whether or not the fixed rate is the best way to go. Obviously, it does sound better, but I'm just trying to get an understanding.
I see a hand up from Attorney Comer. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
You sure can.
Okay, good. I currently go or represent the Board of Adjustment Appeals and the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would continue to do that job. I would also continue to draft resolutions, ordinances, review contracts, terms and conditions, leases, IGAs, what things that come across my desk, as well as assisting the interim city attorney in their duties and helping them with anything that comes up that they're not familiar with in terms of how the city of Inglewood does things. Does that help?
It does, yes.
Anything else from that? All right, stay on board there. Attorney Comer and Attorney Dorcek, you're next.
Just by way of reminder, until Allison resigned, former city attorney Allison McKee Brown in December, you had three full time staff in the city attorney's office outside of a municipal prosecutor, three full time attorneys. As of the end of this week, you'll have one. So you're replacing two full time staff.
Right. Yeah, so really, the amount of money that we're talking about is replacing two full time staff per month. Is another way to look at it. If there's a if there's a monthly rate, it's, you know, it's comparable, if not less, lots less. Member Ward.
I think more than the cost, if we want to get things done, we're we're going to have to realize that we're not hiring one person from a firm we're hiring to. Potentially.
Or a firm that specializes in enough that they can put people on it right away. Yep. All right. So it I I have the sense that none of the firms are firms that we don't feel comfortable with. It really is boiling down to how we want to do the do the pay on this or the pay as you go or the monthly. Is that really kind of it? Let's hear the different perspectives I heard from Member Ward. He'd like to have a fixed rate. Are there others? Go ahead, Member Ward. You can continue to explain your position if you'd like.
Sorry. Yeah, not all those fixed rates are are the same either. There are some that call out specific things that we want to do within the next couple of months as add-ons. So I think we should be aware of that as well. We could be running the meter potentially higher than than what we're expecting as we go through these projects.
Member Questa.
I I mean, I fixate more on the the rates, the fixed rate as opposed to hourly, but I would invite correction on that from city attorney Dorcek. If I'm overlooking something there, I mean, in my head, it seems that, of course, we'd want a fixed rate as opposed to hourly. But if perhaps that could, you know, sneak up us up on us as well, and and there might be some benefits to hourly, I certainly like a perspective. But if, if perhaps that could, you know, sneak up us on, up on us as well, and, and there might be some benefits to hourly, I, I'd certainly like a perspective.
That's an incredibly hard question to ask, though I do think it is the central question. Is, it's going to be very difficult because unfortunately, this is a relatively quick process, but also whenever you're in this situation where you're hiring an outside firm at both a fixed rate and an hourly rate, which is really what all seem to be proposing. There are going to be add-ons for that. And so you really want to look at what you're getting within that fixed rate, but also know that you're going to be paying some of that outside rate. The other thing I would note, and I think by way of perspective, if you look at those hourly rates and you compare them to what you were getting for full-time staff, so those hourly rates are much higher than you were paying for full-time staff. So I think it would appear logical that you'd be paying more at this during this, during time. I don't know if that's helpful or not, but that would be my perspective on hourly versus fixed rate.
Does that help?
Thank you. Yes, it does. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Attorney.
It's a good clarification. Thank you. Mayor, let's see. Oh, Mayor Portem, you don't have your hand up. Member Russell.
Thank you. Um, and I would tend to be more supportive of a fixed rate also. And I'm wondering if there is some things on the agenda that we can probably slow down a little bit to, to decrease expenses. And I don't know how that, that would work.
Any answers to that? Like there could be a prioritization of things that, you know, we think we really can hold off. Is that what you're asking a little bit?
Yeah. Yeah.
Attorney Doratek and City Manager, either one of you, go ahead.
I'll defer to Sean.
Thanks, Alex. I would just say that we would need councils, a lot of feedback and discussion with council about what, what to slow down. Because there are a lot of projects in the till, so we could put that on a future agenda item. But I would be really reluctant as a staff member to say, we're going to pick what's going to be delayed and what to move forward with. So we would need to have that discussion with council.
And to further what Sean is saying, I, I can certainly understand from Member Russell, the idea that well, maybe we can hold off on some things to conserve costs. But one thing to remind all of council is that what the City Attorney's Office does is, is a whole lot more than just what gets seen by council and what appears in meetings. And so if I don't, I don't want to put a percentage on it, but I would say maybe 10%, 20%. And so if you're cutting down the 20% down to 16%, I'm not, that's, I'm not sure if you're going to achieve a cost savings that seems significant or meaningful.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and my quick question is for our city attorney. Regarding these proposals, I see one where basically it's all inclusive except for litigation. Are we spending much time on litigation these days? I mean, obviously, anything could come up at, it could come up at any time. But is that something that's a problem for us?
Yes. And the reason I say that is one of, one of the many functions that, that doesn't appear in front of you is the amount of litigation that's handled internally. Especially in the last two or three years since I was brought on. One of the, one of the reasons for bringing me on was to handle a lot of litigation so that you're not farming it out. Because at this point, if you're hiring outside, if you're hiring an outside counsel to be your interim city attorney, and then trying not to pay for litigation on them, you're just going to pay for it from another firm. And so there was, there, there was and does exist a whole lot of what firms would consider litigation that is handled in-house. It, you know, I couldn't necessarily say on a weekly or monthly basis, especially since depending on the efficiency of the outside firm and the lawyers, that could vary quite a bit, but it would be something to account for.
Can you give me about like an hours wise, is this 10 hours or is this 30 hours, five hours, 30 hours a week?
Or even percent of your job?
Yeah, percent. Yeah, sure.
I would say probably about prior to coming into this role, it was probably about 33%. It's, it's fallen off somewhat, but that's only because I've been doing two people's jobs. But in general, you're probably looking at a good 15 to 20 hours a week as a basic.
Okay, that's helpful.
I just, I need to say that in Alex's maybe underselling what he's done, but I mean, that's really a large part of what he's been doing since he was hired on. And I mean, it's had a significant, significant impact. When I first got on council, I could not believe the reams of paper, and that was back before we had electronics. So I don't know how you measure the electronic, I guess in bytes. But I just couldn't believe how much outside counsel we were, we were putting money into. It was just a, a lot of money. And since that, in a lot of cases, it just seemed like we were constantly in some big time trouble. But it seems like we have really turned the, we've been much more proactive, and I think that's the difference in what Attorney Doratek has done. I don't know. Do you think that's true, Alex? I don't know.
Very much so.
Yeah. So I think, I think we're going to see a change. I mean, this isn't going to go on long, right? So we've got a, I mean, hopefully it's only be a few months. But we don't want to lose ground either. So it, I, I'd love to hear those of you that looked at these a little longer, your perspective on this. I'll let Member Russell go first, though.
So mine is, mine is just a question in, in looking at this. Are some of these firms, could they be overburdened? And if we hire them, they may not have the time that we need them to help us. Is that a possibility?
I would say that they've all, we were very clear in the proposal that we sent them of what the expectations were. We provided a list of all the different meetings, all the different expectations. And we did get a few questions from them about that, you know, what the time commitment would be, the days and times of the meetings. Are they in person or on Zoom or whatnot? And after answering those questions, we still received these proposals. So we didn't necessarily receive a specific indication that they were overly burdened. Obviously, as you saw, most of them or all of them do have other municipal clients. And as you can see from, from the applications, they've identified, they've all identified at least one person who would be the primary contact. Some of them have kind of had variations of that model, you know, of having maybe a junior associate, for example, be in the, or an associate be in the contact and a partner be in the backup. Maybe it's two or three kind of doing a tag team. So again, we don't necessarily have a, an amazing read on that, but we did get some questions about the time commitment. And we were pretty clear in the process about what it would be.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question, can council get a copy of the RFP that was sent out?
Sure.
Thank you.
So council, I'm going to ask this first. Is there any, is there any firm that you really kind of think you're not? Well, let's, I, first of all, I'm going to ask what, Alex and Tim, what are some of your perspectives of when you've seen these? That you've seen these now, what, what do you, what do you see? It's helpful. What do you see some concerns we should be looking at?
Well, the first, again, the first thing in this, what I was start, going to start to say was, you want to look at who the primary contact is. And in going through, if you look under the lead attorney, I guess these places start as the last one. And, and just to be clear, I, I'm just going to call it like I see it. I don't know any of these people. Or at least the vast majority. But under the Williamson and Hayashi, the person they're suggesting is their lead attorney, M. Keith Martin, based on the resume, does not appear to have ever served as a city attorney previously. His vast primary experience was as a municipal prosecutor, so I'm a little bit concerned about that one. I don't know, I, again, no aspersions to Mr. Martin. I just don't see the experience that maybe is helpful to you. Somewhat similarly, under Murray, Dahl, Berry and Renault, the person suggested was a city attorney for one town for two years, but didn't see much else in terms of that lead attorney position, which is a much different position than being municipal prosecutor or serving other people. And it's, there's different expectations there. The other three do have very experienced attorneys. You may even know the names Kendra Carberry and Corey Hoffman from Hoffman Parker. Paul Goddick has been experienced, has, has vast experience under Kissinger and Feldman. And Leonard Michau seems, seems to have a lot of experience. I don't know, I don't know her as much as I know and, and I've heard of the other two firms, the Hoffman Parker and the Kissinger Feldman. So from my perspective, I would, I would eliminate the, the bottom two on the list. We did just arrange these alphabetically, just ended up this way. And I would say that in discussing this with people, I discussed this with as, as, you know, the city manager, deputy city manager, deputy city attorney, everyone was in agreement about that. And so you're really talking about those, that the first three firms alphabetically. And I would say that having gone through it, our recommendation was to retain Hoffman Parker based on experience, based on their already working relationship with Inglewood and, and with Deputy City Attorney Comer, who happens to have worked with Corey Hoffman a fair amount and knows of him. And I think that that's, that's going to be, that's an underappreciated but really important relationship. Because if they're coming into Inglewood and they don't know much about Inglewood, they're really going to have to work well with Deputy City Attorney Comer.
Thank you. Very, very helpful. Councilmember Anderson.
The, the two, the two that kind of were the top for me were, were Hoffman and Parker and Michau Cox and McCaskin. The, 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 the challenge that I had with Hoffman and Parker is it didn't seem like they provided a clear point person. They were kind of all, all in, but I'm not sure, I, I, I'm not sure who we would get from council meeting to council meeting. I don't know if there's any, if, if staff has any more clarity on that, but I'm a little uncomfortable not really knowing the one point person who would be, be the attorney for us.
And if I may, I read it as Corey Hoffman, but I, if you saw something different, again, we were all sort of doing this quickly. So I cannot say affirmatively that that's accurate.
Is this to the City Attorney Dodd?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to quickly point out, I think, city, interim city attorney Doratek acknowledged it, but that what he represented as recommendations were based on not just his recommend, they are, they are his recommendations, but also on a discussion that, that we all had this afternoon.
Okay. Yeah, it helps me to say that I'm, I'm willing to narrow it down to these three. I think I, my question would be who has the best relationship with the city so far that we trust and that there's sort of the go-tos that we have been using in the past and that we know, understand enough of us to, and can work with, you know, Attorney Comer in a way that's going to be helpful in the next two or three months. And it sounds like we have a couple of those that we feel good and are just one in particular, right? And that one's the Hoffman firm. Okay. Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. And so actually, could we have Deputy City Attorney weigh in on which one he particularly likes or he feels that he could work well with?
I can do that. And I would have to say it would be with the, the Hoffman firm. I have worked with Corey and both Corey and Kendra, and I have known them for several years. Actually, probably about 15 years. And I feel comfortable with working with, with that firm.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So Attorney Comer, you were involved in this discussion in order that, that both Tim and Alex were just telling us about, right? So the recommendations included you. Okay, I just want to make sure that. But that's, that's your top candidate.
That's my top candidate, yes.
So here's the deal from my perspective. We've asked Attorney Comer to be helping us move forward in the next two to three months. And if this is the firm that he feels the most comfortable working with, I mean, this is why I wanted to get their perspective to begin with. I, I feel totally comfortable going with them and really thank him for his willingness to do this again and have to kind of stand in the gap for us. So that's my two cents. Councilmember Wink.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, this makes sense to me as well. I think it's more up to Attorney Comer than to me to decide who's going to make for the best collaboration in this interim period. So I also support Attorney Comer's choice.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I, my, I'm just reading back through the, the proposal again from Hoffman and Parker. And I'm totally comfortable with them as, you know, I think that actually they were, they were, they were my favorite of all the applicants. But the, the, the question still remains, can we? I, I read back through it. It really does look like Corey Hoffman and Kendra Carberry would be kind of tag team. Which, you know, that's not, not the end of the world. If that's the best working relationship, I'm, I'm fine with that. But who am I going to, when I pick up the phone, who am I going to call when I need to get, you know, as a council member, need legal advice and that kind of thing? That's just the one question I have. And if it's Corey Hoffman, then fine, I'm, I'm, I'm totally supportive of it. I think they're the best. They're pretty expensive for litigation. So, but you know, hey, we're, you know, we want to, we're trying to get a lot done in council, so we may need to spend some money here. I get it. But if that can be confirmed, I would be totally happy with it. Maybe, and maybe staff is just familiar enough to tell me that. That, yeah, Corey Hoffman's the lead on that.
And you're still, you're still asking that question, but maybe we don't know it, so we're going to have to-
Well, it doesn't, it, it doesn't look like it's clear in the application or the proposal to me, but I know-
It looks like a co-leadership, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you would want that before we go forward.
No, I'm not, not particularly. I'm just wondering if there's information I don't know about or something in the application that our Attorney Doratek or, or Mr. Dodd are aware of.
Mr. Dodd, do you want to add to that?
I think Mr. Councilmember Anderson's reading of it is accurate. However, and please correct me in terms of the attorney door to give this incorrect. But my, my understanding is that if council does select this particular firm, that you could direct staff as part of the contract process to request a specific, you know, to request that there is one point person or that kind of thing. Is that, is that correct in terms of the attorney?
I apologize. I couldn't find my own mute. But I would imagine, and yeah, I can, obviously I can't speak for the firm, but I'd imagine that if the request was, we just want to know there's one person that we call, I'd imagine that could be accommodated. But again, I can't speak for the firm, for their firm.
All right. I'm going to go to Member Ward next and then back to Member Russell.
So the Hoffman proposal does seem to indicate that they intend to send two associates to city council meetings. So we would potentially see someone who isn't one of the principals at, at the city council meetings, advising council during those sessions. I wanted to point that out. I'm comfortable with that, but some other members have indicated that they might not be.
All right. And Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I don't have a problem, I, I don't think, with them sharing responsibilities. I, if Attorney Comer is willing to field council questions, if we have questions, I really think that might be the best for us. Because if we start engaging in conversations with attorneys that we've hired outside, it could potentially get pretty expensive. And I think that if Attorney Comer, which I'm confident that he would do a good job answering the questions of council, that if he felt he needed someone else that he could weigh in on that, I, I just think that would be wiser for us.
If, if I could address that, I'm-
Yeah, please do.
I would be working closely with the interim city attorney firm. You know, so if there was a question that was asked of me and I didn't have a ready answer or needed some backup on that, I would be more than comfortable with working with the interim to answer the question for the council member. Certainly, there are going to be questions that are fairly straightforward, but there could be more that are a little more nuanced. And I want to make sure that I'm giving you the right information.
All right. So it, it seems to me, I, well, I don't know where everyone, everyone falls on this. We haven't heard from everyone, but it, there's a movement towards having the Hoffman firm, I'm sorry, I'm not giving all the names, be the key top one. And to go back to them and perhaps clarify, if- And to go back to them and perhaps clarify if we could have a point persons, um, that we're working with. And is that really what the, is that the piece? And then the, it would be a fixed rate with these added fees beyond. Is that what everybody's in agreement with? That's what's sort of on the table now. Not sort of, it is. Member Russell.
Thank you. I think that the, the fixed fees is for the council meetings and, and all of that part of it, the extra fee is for litigation, right?
Yes, and most of them that is it, but I don't think in theirs it's clear that it's just, it's assistance, right?
It says with 275 an hour for litigation, without a fixed rate hourly would be 205 per hour.
For legal assistance, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yep, that is what it is. And so, yeah. And we can control the litigation to some extent, but not always. All right, so I'm going to take this no answer of anything that we're going to move forward on this one, and they'll bring us back a, uh, a proposal that's worked out with them. And, uh, attorney Comer, I'd love to have you be at the center of that to make sure that you're getting what you need. That's my little piece there. Done agree with everybody? I don't see any hands up, so I'm assuming yes. Member Anderson, you have your mute off, so I'm wondering if you're trying to say.
Well, I guess, I guess it's a point of order. We don't need to make a motion or anything for this. I thought we had a special meeting.
Uh, we, we could, yes, we could make an, uh, a motion tonight to go with them, um, and then just have it be done and over with. And you'll have to bring it back though, right? A final document that's, yeah. So does it matter if we make a motion tonight? Do you need us to make a motion now or? Go ahead, member, or, uh, attorney Comer.
I think you can make a motion, um, to appoint Hoffman Carberry as the interim city attorney. And then, um, what would happen is you would, uh, we would send them one of our standard city contracts and they would review that and then it would come to council for approval.
So what happens when, that isn't going to happen until like April, whatever? Is that just?
Actually, it could happen rather quickly. If, if, if council tonight makes a motion to, uh, appoint them, I believe that the contract could go to them as early as tomorrow or the next day.
Okay, but then we don't have to have it come back and for them to work, is what you're saying?
Yes, I mean, it would come back to you on the next regular meeting, April 5th for approval.
Right, but that's a bit late, isn't it? I think.
It, it is, I think that's April, uh, April 5th. And, um, if I could ask, uh, deputy attorney Comer a question, do we have, uh, if, would, do we anticipate this being under a hundred thousand? I, from everything I've seen, it looks like it is. Could I not execute that contract with council's approval tonight? Under our purchasing law?
Yes, you could. If it's under a hundred thousand dollars, yes, you could, absolutely. So.
Brilliant.
It does not necessarily, I'm sorry, I was, I was, uh, doing lawyer math. Um, so yes, if it's a hundred, under a hundred thousand dollars, the city manager can sign that and, uh, it would not have to come back to council for approval. Uh, you've already, uh, tonight you would be appointing them as the interim and then the contract would go out and we would, um, make the changes or whatever we had to do with the contract to get them on board.
Okay.
And best practice would be to cap it at under a hundred thousand. And then depending on the duration, at that time, you, you know, you'd have a lot more time to then actually approve a change or approve a contract over a hundred thousand if the duration of the contract lasts so that it goes long, that gets to that expense.
Excellent. Member Ward, you have your hand up.
So I'm ready to introduce a motion.
Go ahead, because I think.
I move, I move to appoint Hoffman, Parker, Wilson and Carberry as the interim city attorney for England.
Thank you, member Ward, and then there's a second?
I'll second.
My member Anderson, all right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, critique a roll call vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, and thank you for the four or five of you or whoever that pulled this all together, including you Jade, who had to keep sending us documents. I appreciate it so much. It's a lot of quick turnaround on this. All right, our next item is, uh, any further city council members' choice? Any other things that you want to say? Uh, member Russell, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, I had a question about, um, the public comment from last, um, from last Monday night. Um, we started making people give their addresses again. Um, is that a policy change? Because a couple of years ago, we, um, had talked about letting people announce that what district they lived in, rather than giving their address. And I know we've gotten a couple of emails, I've gotten a couple of calls. Um, so I'm just wondering.
Yes, and so have I, and I guess we need to ask for, apparently we didn't change an ordinance on this, we simply did a policy thing. And, uh, I, I guess we can ask the current city attorney, if, interim city attorney, if you feel like we covered our bases or not in that.
It's actually Corey Hoffman's problem now. Excuse me about that. Um, I'm looking through for the camp, you appointed him. I'm looking through for the council section, um, or I'm sorry, the code section of the Inglewood Municipal Code. I'm trying to find it, but.
Knows where it is.
1529C, manner of addressing.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, it says specifically, each person addressing the council can give his name and address for the record and shall limit his address to, to the reasonable time, to a reasonable time. So you have two shaws in there, um, shall give name, shall give address. Certainly this is something that if council wishes, they, you all could change, but as it stands right now, it does, it is specifically requiring name and address.
Yeah, we, we made a mistake, member Russell, we should have had an ordinance in there. And I agree with you, I don't want people to have to give their address. I think it's really scary in the city.
I, I think that perhaps we need to bring that, um, back for, for ordinance change.
I think we could get one by the next meeting.
Okay.
I would hope, so.
All right, that'd be great. I believe that's all I have tonight, thank you. And actually, I'd like to thank interim city attorney Alex Dorettick for filling in in the main time, we wish you the best and, uh, because I'm sure this is the last council meeting.
Unless I moved to Inglewood.
Okay.
Thank you, member Russell.
All right, thank you.
You're always welcome at our council meetings. Member Anderson, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with, uh, bringing back an ordinance to change that address, uh, thing in the, for public comment. But I also, I also wanted to mention that we've had the discussion about in-person council meetings a number of times. I think where we left it at one point was that once we got to blue, we would revisit that discussion or once we changed, I don't, I don't know if that was consensus or maybe that was just what I wanted to do. Um, but anyway, I would like to move that up to see, and especially if, if the, you know, if the whole public health order is going away April 16th, I think this is a good time here in the next month to be revisiting the in-person council meeting questions. So I wanted to see if that's something we could get on the agenda, um, for discussion.
Okay.
Otherwise, uh, nothing else to report, thank you.
Thank you. Member Ward?
So while we're on the subject of quick and easy, uh, changes to the Inglewood Municipal Code, um, I would like to introduce the possibility of striking one paragraph from the Inglewood Municipal Code relative to the budget advisory committee's enabling ordinance. That is the portion that, uh, restricts the budget advisory committee from making specific capital project recommendations. I'm not proposing that we add anything to the code. I would just like to strike that restriction so that the budget advisory committee, if it chose to do so in a method that it chose, could make specific capital project recommendations. Uh, the extent of that work would be striking one paragraph of the Inglewood Municipal Code, that's it.
All right, so we could, uh, we can definitely put that on an agenda if everybody agrees to, uh, to bring that forward in some way. Council member Russell.
Um, I think we need to be careful with that because it may impact the charter. Um, it, it may influence the charter because the charter says only the planning and zoning commission can do that.
Uh, go ahead, member Ward.
The charter does not say only the planning and zoning commission can do that. The charter says the planning and zoning commission should do that and must do that, but it does not say only the planning and zoning commission should do that. So we're not facing a charter restriction by inviting other people to weigh in on that process.
This was the debate of the day when we formed the BAC. As to whether or not we should do this, but it was really, I mean, we really wanted a budget advisory committee in general, but there were lots of differences about to what extent they should be breathing into our budget development. And, uh, so I, probably it would be good, if you don't mind, member Ward, if we can put it onto a study session to talk about what does this actually mean? Seems like a simple decision, but it's got some ramifications. So if everybody's in favor of that, we'll just look for it, um, try to put it into one of our future study sessions. Member Ward?
Uh, I would, I would say that there is some time sensitivity to this in that the budget cycle is beginning now. So, uh, if, if we could discuss it, I, I don't know that it would take longer than 15 minutes soon, um, that would, I, I would appreciate that.
Sure. Okay. Other council members have anything else? All right, then we, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just getting my video turned on. I just have a few, um, items that we didn't get to cover last week. Um, as hopefully you saw, Inglewood is one of 20 cities across the nation that was chosen as finalists for the 2021 All-America City Program. That is sponsored by the National Civics League and in early June will be competing in a virtual conference to be one of 10 cities out of those 20, um, that'll be an All-America City 2021. Uh, information on this was posted this to the city's website, um, sent out to local press and provided to council. Secondly, we are beginning to track using resources from CML pending legislation in the Colorado Legislature that if passed will have an impact on cities. By the end of the week, a report should, um, a report, uh, with detailed summaries, summaries of over 25 pieces of legislation will be sent to all of you. Each month as part of the Government Trends Report, which Tim sends out, we will provide an update on the status of each piece of legislation. Third, uh, the vaccination clinic, um, will begin this Thursday at the Malle Center. And so, um, we are working closely with the Inglewood Housing Authority on getting, um, their residents prioritized for those vaccinations, as well as people who follow the dial, um, or the schedule for, uh, vaccinations. And finally, uh, the sustainability plan that's underway, we just wanted to update you that staff are meeting with representatives of Dr. Cog this week to ensure elements of the plan are aligned with Dr. Cog's sustainability goals. The updated plan will be brought to council for discussion in a motion on April 5th. And I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, council? I'll just say thank you very much for all the work you did on, uh, all of those items of the, the, uh, All-America City from the National Civic League. It's, it's just a huge thing, even being in the top 20 is a phenomenal thing that the whole city should be proud of and the work that you all have done to reflect that, that, uh, award is really strong. So whether or not we get it to, get into the top 10, I'm just very, very pleased with the work that you and your staff and everyone's done together in the last.
Thank you, and if I could just say, it's definitely a team effort. Um, and assistant to the city manager, Tim Dodd, gets a lot of credit for that. And, um, and all of the, the team has done a great job with that, but thank you.
Excellent. And then the second thing is with the vaccination site. I know we've been talking incessantly about getting one of those up and running and here you got it. And so, uh, Representative Froelich and, uh, Senator Bridges and our new city, county commissioner have been sent the info because they're wanting to make sure it gets out amongst people that they have contact with too. So there's some good, um, eyes on that to make sure that it's utilized really well. Thank you. Our city attorney, uh, interim, final council meeting to come and speak in this role, but you're always welcome to come back in any other way.
Um, I don't have anything particular to add. Uh, deputy city attorney Comer did ask that I inform you that the changes to boards and commissions update will, will be delayed a little bit, especially with all the changes going on in the city attorney's office. Um, other than that, uh, it's been fun, so la- so long. Thanks for all the fish. Yep. Council member Ward.
I got it.
But no, it's been fun.
A big thank you to you. Um, I, I mean, we knew there was a risk in having you jump in in this little interim time because you're someone that others would like to see involved in their cities too. So we wish you the best as you continue on and, um, work as a team with your former boss, who now will be your new boss again.
Indeed.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, let's take a, a motion to end this meeting and then we'll do a roll call vote. Can I have a motion to move the, to adjourn this meeting? It's 9:56.
I move to adjourn the meeting, 9:56 PM.
Thank you, can I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Please vote by roll call.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson, seven ayes.
Aye.
I didn't say aye, right?
No.
All right, aye and seven ayes now. All right, everybody have a great week, be safe, be well and love, you know, hug your loved ones tonight. The, the news out of Boulder is not good. Um, it's, it's really horrific, so be well.
Very good. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.